Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this Tampa City Council meeting to order. At this time, I yield to Councilmember Viera for today's invocation.
Thank you very much, sir. It is my great pleasure to introduce Chaplain and Pastor Kerry Nance, who is the Tampa Police Department Chaplain, or Chaplain, excuse me, and pastor of Southside Baptist Church. He was born in Ruston, Louisiana, to pastor and Mrs. Ruben Nance. He married his wife Amy in 1993, with whom they have, with whom she has three children. Both he and Amy's fathers are both Baptist pastors. He came to become a Christian at the age of four at the Landmark Baptist Church in Haynes City, Florida, and was called to preach at the age of 15 at a Christian school retreat. So please rise if you're able to do so for the invocation and stay standing for the pledge. Go ahead, sir.
Well, let's pray. Our Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. We thank you, Lord, for your favor and your grace to us. And, Lord, today, as we come upon this day, we thank you for the city of Tampa. And, Lord, it's obvious that you have blessed this city in a great way. Lord, we do ask that you would continue to put your hand of favor upon us. We ask that you would be with our mayor and, Lord, with the city councilmen. And, Lord, as they make decisions and as they govern and as they handle so many things, I pray, Lord, that you would bless them with wisdom, with knowledge, with understanding. And, Lord, I know that there's probably great weights that they carry. Help them and give them grace that they have and that they need. Bless their families. And, Lord, we don't know the individual crisis or struggles, Lord, that may be behind the scenes, but I pray, Lord, that you would be with them and be with their staff. Lord, I know that they are vigilant, Lord, as they help them as well. And, God, we do pray for our city. We think of the first responders and our police and firemen that are constantly on those front lines. And we ask, Lord, for grace and protection upon them. And, Lord, we do know that at any time, Lord, there could be crisis or danger, but we do understand, Lord, that you have shown great mercy to us. And, Lord, even as we come upon the hurricane season, Lord, we do pray, Lord, that you would put a protection about this city and that you would show us kindness. And, Lord, we thank you for your faithfulness and, Lord, how much you love us every day. And we just thank you, Lord, for what you've done. Thank you for Jesus Christ and, Lord, for his care to us. And it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's do roll call.
Carlson, Hertak, Linden, Henderson.
Present.
Viera.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
And Maniscalco.
Here.
We have a physical call.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to adopt the minutes from August 1st and then the evening session of August 8th, 2024? We have a motion from Councilmember Henderson, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
And let the record show, Councilmember Hertak is here. And I have a memo from Councilmember Linden that he will be absent at today's meeting. We'll submit that into the record. Mr. Shelby, do you want to review the rules and procedures for public comment at this time? Or do you want to wait till then?
No, we can do it now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of City Council. Martin Shelby, the City Council Attorney. This morning, members of the public will be given a reasonable opportunity at today's meeting to address any item on the agenda before City Council takes official action on an item. A three-minute time limit applies to all speakers providing for public comment during general public comment. Again, if you wish to speak during general public comment, please fill out a speaker card and place it in the box outside these chambers. One card per speaker. Cards will be accepted until the start of general public comment. And each person submitting a card will be recognized by name to approach and speak. Names that cannot be read will not be called, so please print legibly. And now, if you are here to speak today at a public hearing, it's designated as a public hearing on your agenda, use the sign-in sheet at the lectern outside instead. And if you need assistance, there is city staff available to assist you. Now, members of the public are also reminded that you are to refrain from disruptive behavior, including making vulgar or threatening remarks or making or causing disruptive noises or sounds or displaying signs or graphics. And please also refrain from making personal attacks against any city's official staff member or members of the public. The chair will rule out of order any person who speaks without being recognized or attempts to address the city council from outside the speaker area at the podium. Persons failing to comply with the council rules may also be ruled out of order and, at the discretion of the chair, may be removed from the chambers for the remainder of today's meeting. And finally, City Council, please refrain from engaging the speaker during public comment. And please, members of the public, be aware that the City Council does not take questions or have a dialogue during general public comment. This is your opportunity to express your position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Before we go to housekeeping, if you're going to speak at general public comment at the beginning and have not filled the card, please fill out a card at this time and then we'll take everyone in order when public comment time begins. At this time, I'm going to go through the agenda. First, a request from, or a memo from Mr. Brad Baer requesting that item number three be moved to staff reports and heard first. Councilmember Hertak?
Can we add number 38 with it? Because they go together.
All right, let me look at here. So 38, make a note. All right, so 3 and 38, if we can hear them together first under staff reports.
So move.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hertak, second from Councilmember Viera. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a memo received from Mr. David Mechanic requesting that item number 84 be withdrawn. Can I get a motion?
What time is, what time is?
We have to wait until 1:30?
Yes, you have to wait.
All right, we'll wait till 1:30, but that'll be, we'll make a note of that. All right, we're going to go through staff reports, one by one. We already mentioned that 3, and then the other item we're going to be heard together first. There is no administration update, is that correct, Chief Bennett?
Right.
All right, no administration update. We're going to go to 86. Do we need staff present for that?
No.
No? Okay. 87?
No.
No? Item 88?
No.
No? Item 88?
No.
No? 89?
No.
90?
No.
91?
No.
Yeah, 92?
I don't, I mean, I'm the maker, I don't, I'm staff.
All right, there's a written report, so we can.
What is that? Is it?
This is 92.
There is a written report, and I'm actually, have made an appointment to talk to Chief Burkhaw after, after what I asked Chief Bennett about adding more money to this year's budget. And he, and after he explained how they're looking at the call program a little bit more, so I will probably be bringing this back at some point, but I'm happy with the report.
Okay, so no, and we'll receive and file item number 92. Item number 93?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right, nobody for 93. 94?
Yes.
Yes, we will have somebody present for 94. Mr. Baer sent out a memo, but be present for 94. 95?
Can we just have a motion to receive and file for that? Kayon Henderson's gone. I'm happy with the memorandum as stated.
Motion to receive and file 95?
Okay.
Second from, motion from Councilmember Henderson, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Councilmember Viera is requesting item number 96 be received and filed, so is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, so no one present for 96. Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
All right, motion from Councilmember Viera, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
And the same, oh, for 97? If we can continue this item to January 9th, 2025?
So move.
There's a motion from Councilmember.
97, I'm sorry. 97?
This is 97, yes, sir.
January, I'm sorry.
January 9th, 2025. Motion from Councilmember Viera, second from Councilmember Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, can we get a motion to receive and file 98 and 99?
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
And item number 100 to be removed from the agenda.
So move.
Motion from Councilmember Viera, second from Councilmember Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, at this time, can I get a motion to approve the agenda and the addendum?
So move.
We have a motion from Councilmember Henderson, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, commendation number one, Mr. Richard Formica, I believe, Councilmember Miranda.
Mr. Chairman, council members, we've had a lot of commendations yearly and for many years. And in this case, this is one that's extremely honorable for me and for all of us who understand that what this gentleman has done for as long as I can remember. It goes back into the 90s, I think. And Mr. Richard Formica, not only is he deserving of this commendation, but is an individual that's done something every day for years and years and years. And it's about one of the most important resources we have that without it, we can live, not us, not you, not no one on earth, and that's water. And he's done an admirable, fantastic job. And I'll read the commendation that is daring to his heart and all of us here in the city of Tampa. "The drought of 2006 through 2009 had just begun. This was one person who was closely following the data associated with the NORA and OAA, rain gauges, river flows, contributions, steam flows, reservoir levels, and minimum flows of the Lower Hillsborough River. His name is Richard Formica. Formica, I'm sorry to mispronounce it. He seemed to know all the river variables even better than our own water department and dam tender. He became a natural and logical appointment to serve as the city's representative on the Hillsborough River Water Board Technical Advisory Council, better known as TAC. During his 11 years on TAC, he continuously challenged everyone to learn as much as possible about the Hillsborough River and the Hillsborough River reservoir. But more importantly, he challenged water department personnel to not only follow the data, but to understand it and the data be used to make sound operational decisions. The information was used to make decisions on dam operations, when and how to buy water and finished water from Tampa Bay Water, watering restriction minimums, flows of the Lower Hillsborough River. Richard held us all accountable. And for that, we are very eternally grateful that in this pleasant and present day, that this commendation be presented to Richard Formica on the 22nd day of August, 2024. In order to do that, you have to go out and do something, no matter if it's cold, hot, raining, soggy, temperatures you can't breathe in. He's done it every day without pay. And he does it because of the kindness of his heart, but also that he wants to make Tampa the best place to live. And he's, in my book, he's one of the heroes of the non-pay brigade. I know you served in the military for many years, so thank you for your service to the country and thank you for your service to the citizens of Tampa. Congratulations." [applause]
Tampa City Council ladies, Tampa City Council gentlemen, thank you for honoring me for my civil service, representing the citizens of Tampa on the Hillsborough River Technical Advisory Council. For about 11 years, I attended monthly meetings with a couple of civilians like myself and by many professional employees of the city and the county and the state agencies, all concerned about the health and safety of the waters in the Hillsborough River and the communities along the river. It has been very interesting, and I appreciate this honor and recommendation, commendation. Any questions?
Thank you very much, sir. Congratulations.
And I thank you. One thing I'd like to recognize here today, and the replacement that this council voter voted unanimously to replace, Richard Formica. And it's Joel Brown, and I for you to meet Mr. Formica and follow in his small footsteps with a big print.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck.
Yes, I have very big shoes to fill, and I met Mr. Formica when I was at the Water Management District. So he was, I can say, as a citizen appointee, he was very formidable when it came to technical discussions and really brought a lot of value and was hands down the most engaged and contributing citizen appointee of the board the entire time I was on it.
Very good, and I believe we have.
Thanks again for all your years of service. And 100% thank you for teaching some of the people that work for us at the water plant how to do little things and big things like this. In water, there's no little thing. It's always a current event.
Very nice, very nice.
Thank you, thank you.
We have someone from the public that wishes to present you with something as well.
Good morning. My name's Stephanie Pointer, and I'm the president of the Tampa Homeowners and Association of Neighborhoods. I don't get up here and say that very often. But Mr. Formica has been a ThAN member for many, many years. And to be honest with you, he has not only retired from the board, the Water Board, but he's retired from ThAN as well, and we desperately miss him. So our E-Board voted to make Mr. Formica the very first honorary ThAN member for life. And if you want to come to the meetings, you may come anytime you like. And we just wanted to make sure that you were recognized in all your hard work for your neighborhood and your community, not just with the Water Board, but in your neighborhoods as well. And I'll carry this out for you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We appreciate this. You know, I'll carry that for you.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, Councilmember Hertak?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you so much for your service to the citizens of Tampa. It's people like you that make this city, you know, do what it can, and we really do appreciate. We have our staff members, but then those who just care enough to just really, really, day in and day out, be activists. We are so, so grateful for what you've given to the city. And I hope you enjoy your well-earned retirement, even from volunteer work.
I'm trying to, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have FDOT. I believe I saw them here. They're going to give a 10-minute update on projects within the city of Tampa. Good morning, sir.
Hey, good morning. Justin Hall, FDOT District 7. So no presentation today. I figured I'd just come give a little bit of an update, answer any questions, and kind of go from there. So just a real quick update. One of the projects I was asked about was the 275 design project from Hillsborough North to Bears. So we just recently began design again. That project, we'll continue to work with the community on underpass improvements, the local street network connections like we've done on the other projects. You know, one day, we probably should come give an update about where we started on the project to the south and where we ended as far as the sidewalk improvements, walls, lighting, things of that nature, because quite a bit did change based on feedback from the community. So that design is going to get underway, so there'll be several meetings on that. Quick update on Ola Avenue and Central Avenue Bike Way. So we've contracted with the contractor. Those were great projects, great successes of partnerships between the city of Tampa and the DOT. Those projects will start construction later this year. Looks like we're targeting December. And it's a little over a year of construction on those projects. So I think if all goes well, we're anticipating those projects will open March or April of the following year. So it should be 2026. You know, it's kind of interesting. I asked my staff for just some details because we get asked a lot on how much do we invest on standalone bike ped facilities? And it's really hard for us to find that number because of the way our system codes everything, and it's a little antiquated. So we were trying to find out. So what we did find out, though, is that we've got about $100 million of standalone bike lane, sidewalk, trail projects programmed in District 7, both retroactive, looking back a few years, and then looking forward. So about $100 million investment. So when we get asked that, you know, where are we making that investment? And about, we've got about 50 miles of bike lane sidewalk projects inside the city of Tampa proper. So pretty big investment there. And that's from a partnership between us, the city council, you know, city staff. I know Vic, we worked quite a bit on the Greenspine Project, so a lot of successes there. So I'd take any questions. That was it, just trying to give you a quick update on 275, and that's.
Councilmember Hertak, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that you hit the high notes because that's pretty much all the questions that people have. I'm going to start with some of the easier, well, not easier, but as far as the Ola and Central projects, bikeway projects go, the thing that I'm asked about constantly, is there going to be a light at MLK? Is there going to be a light at Columbus? Are those going to be push-button crosswalks? If you have, if you know that, that would be great.
So, okay, cool. So I can, I can address some of that. So just a few things. So on the Ola Avenue Bike Way, there'll be raised islands with delineation for on-street parking along Han and Ola Highland. Also, crosswalks at Ola Osbourne Intersections. There'll be also the addition of new marked crosswalks and intersection lighting for Columbus Drive, which includes an RFB. Martin Luther King, which is a fully actuated traffic signal for the peds. And pedestrian hybrid beacon at Sly. So that's on the Ola project. Then on Central Avenue, we'd have RFBs at Palm, Columbus, Fern, and Flora.
Okay, great. I appreciate that detail. As far, this is a project you did not mention, but I have talked to you about in the past, the Florida-Tampa stormwater project and how this is no longer going to have a stormwater component. Can you talk to us a little bit about that?
Sure, yes. Some of it's cost escalation, which I know everybody's dealing with. So we, just a little history for everyone. We submitted for a grant, federal grant, for that project. We received the federal grant. One component of that federal grant was the drainage improvements. We have been meeting with the feds to let them know, hey, based on cost escalation, you know, we can meet these components of the grant. We can't meet the drainage components. And for magnitude, because a lot of time we get asked that, I think the delta is about $70 million difference for the drainage improvements, which it started off at about $16 million, and now it's about $70 million. The DOT, we've invested quite a bit in that project to keep it moving because the feds only gave us, I think, about $17 million. I have to go back and look at the exact dollar amount the feds gave us on that. But, so quite a bit of investment from the state. We will still have the wide sidewalk because I know that's been a discussion. So there'll be, on Tampa Avenue, there'll be a trail. On Florida, we'll be widening the sidewalks where we can and trying to minimize utility conflicts because that's another conversation we have quite a bit is there's utility poles right in the middle of the sidewalk? And we still will do the mid-block crossings and some of the other improvements and try and set up the ADA for transit because obviously that's another big conversation there is like streetcar, express bus on Florida-Tampa. So making sure we're setting that up to work with that.
And so I had a question about whether the Tampa Street sidewalks are going to be, if you're going to be doing both sides of Tampa Street?
So I believe on one side, just trying to widen the sidewalk. On the west side, it's eight to 10 feet. Because there's some areas where it gets tapered down to eight, but eight to 10 feet on the west side.
And then additionally, I just want to make a public request that, and I know you work with Mr. B. Day and his department, but just to tackle it again, to have more conversations about the stormwater while we have this going on, we might as well. Because ultimately, it's going to be our, I mean, we're going to have to pay for it one way or another. So while you're working on pulling up the road, now is the time. And the citizens are desperately asking for it. The flooding in Tampa hates us is pretty significant. But now, to actually talk about the widening that the public is heavily against, I have a question about the funding for the PD&E.
Okay.
Where, where was that? I cannot find in past budgets where we have approved the funding for the PD&E for the expansion of the interstate from Hillsborough to Bears.
It was in 2021, I believe. I can get you the exact year, and I can even send you the tip that it was included in. It was a part of a bigger, it was part of the bigger conversation. And yes, it's 2021, I believe. But I can get you the exact year and tip pages and everything.
And, I mean, obviously, I'm bear-omiss if I didn't say that this is something that every person who represents, a person who is a citizen of the city of Tampa highly opposes. So again, I would, I would ask that you open it up for public comment before we go any further to really bring the community and find out what else we can do instead of widening interstates.
Yeah, I mean, we'll continue to meet with the communities. I mean, a lot of people have talked about public comments. So we did extensive public communication, public involvement during the PD&E phase. In fact, I mean, many of you attended those meetings, participated in those meetings. And I know a lot of the community did as well. For a while there, I mean, we weren't really doing anything. You know, we completed the PD&E. We were kind of waiting to start design. So now that we're kind of starting design, you'll see us start to re-engage like we do, like we did to the south, and we'll do the same here. I'll tell you, you know, one fact that I don't think gets talked about often, and I hear a lot of conversations about transit. And obviously, we're a big investor in transit. I mean, we're, we've got money set aside for the streetcar extension. We've, we've been paying the streetcar fares. We've, I mean, we're investing in transit all over the place. And one thing a lot of people don't realize is that the model that everyone uses, so the TPO uses it for their long-range transportation plan. We use it for our development. It's a forward-looking model in about 40, 30, 40 years into the future. And that model has the widening of 275. But, and this is the part that doesn't get talked about a lot. It also has the CSX rail converted to transit. It has a heart system built out far beyond what it is today. And even with all of that, you still have to widen 275. And so there's a lot of conversation about whether you need to widen 275. Is there an alternate? The answer is you have to do it all. Like, the transportation network needs it all. In fact, that's the way the.
Yes, some of it's cost escalation, which I know everybody's dealing with. So we, just a little history for everyone. We submitted for a grant, federal grant for that project. We received the federal grant. One component of that federal grant was the drainage improvements. We have been meeting with the feds to let them know, hey, based on cost escalation, you know, we can meet these components of the grant. We can't meet the drainage components. And for magnitude, because a lot of time we get asked that, I think the delta is about $70 million difference for the drainage improvements, which it started off at about $16 million, and now it's about $70 million. The DOT, we've invested quite a bit in that project to keep it moving, because the feds only gave us, I think, about $17 million. I have to go back and look at the exact dollar amount the feds gave us on that. But, so quite a bit of investment from the state. We will still have the wide sidewalk, because I know that's been a discussion. So there'll be, on Tamp Avenue, there'll be a trail. On Florida, we'll be widening the sidewalks where we can and trying to minimize utility conflicts, because that's another conversation we have quite a bit, is there's utility poles right in the middle of the sidewalk. And we still will do the mid-block crossings and some of the other improvements and try and set up the ADA for transit, because obviously, that's another big conversation there, is like streetcar, express bus on Florida-Tampa. So making sure we're setting that up to, to work with that.
And so I had a question about whether the Tampa Street sidewalks are going to be, if you're going to be doing both sides of Tampa Street?
So I believe on one side, just trying to widen the sidewalk. On the west side, it's eight to 10 feet. Because there's some areas where it gets tapered down to eight, but eight to 10 feet on the west side.
And then additionally, I just want to make a public request that, and I know you work with Mr. B. Day and his department, but just to tackle it again, to have more conversations about the stormwater while we have this going on, we might as well. Because ultimately, it's going to be our, I mean, we're going to have to pay for it one way or another. So while you're working on pulling up the road, now is the time, and the citizens are desperately asking for it. The flooding in Tampa Heights is, is pretty significant. But now, to actually talk about the, the widening that the public is, is heavily against. I have a question about the funding for the PDNE.
Okay.
Where, where was that? I cannot find in past budgets where we have approved the funding for the PDNE for the expansion of the interstate from Hillsborough to Beers.
It was in 2021, I believe. I can get you the exact year, and I can even send you the, the tip that it was included in. It was a part of a bigger, it was part of the bigger conversation. And yes, it's 2021, I believe, but I can get you the exact year and tip pages and everything.
And I mean, obviously, I'm bear-omiss if I didn't say that this is something that every person who represents, a person who is a citizen of the city of Tampa highly opposes. So again, I would, I would ask that you open it up for public comment before we go any further, to really bring the community and find out what else we can do instead of widening interstates.
Yeah, I mean, we'll continue to meet with the communities. I mean, a lot of people have talked about public comment. So we did extensive public communication, public involvement during the PDNE phase. In fact, I mean, many of you attended those meetings, participated in those meetings, and I know a lot of the community did as well. For a while there, I mean, we weren't really doing anything. You know, we, we completed the PDNE. We were kind of waiting to start design. So now that we're kind of starting design, you'll see us start to re-engage like we do, like we did to the south, and we'll do the same here. I'll tell you, you know, one fact that I don't think gets talked about often, and I hear a lot of conversations about transit. And obviously, we're a big investor in transit. I mean, we're, we've got money set aside for the streetcar extension. We've, we've been paying the streetcar fares. We've, I mean, we're, we're investing in transit all over the place. And one thing a lot of people don't realize is that the, the model that everyone uses, so the TPO uses it for their long-range transportation plan, we use it for our development. It's a forward-looking model in about 40, 30, 40 years into the future. And that model has the widening of 275, but, and this is the part that doesn't get talked about a lot. It also has the CSX rail converted to transit. It has a HART system built out far beyond what it is today. And even with all of that, you still have to widen 275. And so there's a lot of conversation about whether you need to widen 275. Is there an alternate? The answer is you have to do it all, like the transportation network needs it all. In fact, that's the way the model's built. The model is built with all of it in there for it to succeed in the future. So I mean, I think we continue to be an advocate for transit. I continue to be an advocate for roads. I continue to be an advocate for trails, bikeways. I mean, that, and I think that's proofed by my work program. But anyway, just wanted to say that, because I think that gets lost in the conversation, that it gets isolated to 275, but it is part of a bigger picture, and it all has to be there.
Well, thank you. I don't know if anyone else says.
And I agree with everything that she said, so. Literally word for word, Councilmember Miranda.
Thank you so much for your clarity in what modeling is. You're right. Everything is walkability, rideability, bicyclability, train. Everything is, is under you, and we understand out of your division, anyway. Thank you for what you do. And let me ask you a question. In your experience, something that happened in '22 or '23, and it hasn't been built, what type of inflationary rate, if it was $100 million, what, what is it today?
I will tell you, it, it depends a little bit based on material, and I'm not trying to be.
Yeah, I understand that.
But I would say that what we've seen over the past two years is about a 30%. That's what we've seen. And I, I believe from talking to the city and the county, they're seeing about the same over that timeframe, 30. I think the county saw about 40. I think we're hovering right at 31%. So if it's just asphalt, about 19%. If it involves concrete and steel, in the 30s.
Thank you. I want to make sure that the public understands we're not giving money away, just.
Oh, yes. We have a record work program, but there's record costs.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Carlson.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Hertak. You know, I've been following this project for a long time, since before I got on council, and, you know, not you, because I've never met you, but DOT has a reputation for being a bully on this project. And, you know, hordes of people, hundreds of people have come out to meetings to protest this project. And, you know, it's seen as having a couple problems. One is destroying neighborhoods, which the interstate did in the beginning. But the other thing is just exacerbating sprawl. You know, really, it's just a gateway to Pasco County. And we know when Sierra Club and others sued over the Suncoast Expressway years ago, it was easy when the veterans first opened. I lived out there, and you could easily zip back and forth. And now there's huge developments all the way up. And, and we're trying to do infill development as fast as we can, and the public doesn't see that as, as being acceptable. You, you all report to the state, not to us, and so you all can ultimately do whatever you want. But this is causing great concern in our community, and it's, it, it's going to cause DOT to have a very negative reputation in our community. I hope that doesn't mean you don't fix other roads, because we have other roads that need to be fixed as well. But, you know, I, I used to do public involvement, public input for, for a living, and you can go in and hold a charrette, check boxes, and say, we've got all this. But, but it's, it's obvious if, we don't often agree, but if the, if, if we all are consistently hearing that drumbeat from the public, that, that it's not a good idea. It's not a good idea. We need to work on other transportation solutions. Thank you.
And I, and I will say one thing. So when we started this, right, so back when the initial conversations were being had around TBX, you know, we were talking about buying, I think, like 336 houses, right? And we were talking about express lanes to the north. And where we're at now is we're not talking about buying any property. We're talking about working within the existing property that we have. And the key, too, one thing that we hear a lot in, in conversations I've had with the community is about the noise walls. Well, for me to build and get the noise walls, for me to get the credit for the noise walls, for me to get the feds to approve the noise walls, I have to justify that. And the way that we justify it is with the capacity project. So I, I understand, I, I hear the community, I listen to them, there's a lot of misinformation, because I mean, I, I, you know, we, we talked about this at the TPO meeting, there was a lot of people saying we were going to, we were buying all these historic houses, and we're going to tear them down. We're not buying anything. Like, I don't, I don't need to buy any property. Not you, not, not any elected official said that. I'm just saying that was the conversation in the community. So I think there's a lot of misinformation around the project, and I think that the project facilitates a lot of things that people don't realize. But I do understand, I understand what you're saying, and, and we will go back out to the community and talk with them.
One, one last thing to you and your colleagues. We, we requested that you come, I forgot, monthly or quarterly, and you all aren't obligated in any way to come present to us, and I appreciate you all coming here and being on the firing line sometimes, sometimes presenting great news that's very positive, sometimes taking hits from the community. But I appreciate you all coming here and engaging us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. And when I said that, you know, I agree with everything Councilmember Hertak said, I do. I've been, you know, I've been on the, the TPO, when it was MPO, now going on 10 years. Literally, my first meeting was the tip meeting of the original TBX, where we had hours of public comment, and the year after was even worse. And, you know, we've heard loud and clear from the community, you know, I've always been against it, any kind of widening, any kind of acquisition of property, you know, because I'll take it back historically, the interstate has destroyed. They call it urban renewal, it's urban removal. You know, these neighborhoods are, after half a century, you know, are now coming back. So, you know, they're weary, they're, they carefully watch these projects, because Tampa Heights, West Tampa, Ebor City, going north, you know, now talking about Hillsborough to Beers, Beers, how you pronounce it. It's of concern, because we've seen the, the long-term damage. So, you know, I'm on that, that TPO, we have those meetings, we have two meetings coming up in September, I believe. But again, thank you. Councilmember mentioned something, Councilmember Hertak mentioned something very important about public dis, you know, public engagement, going out there and listening. I mean, these folks are directly impacted. So thank you very much, sir.
Absolutely. And I, I'll tell you, I would love to come back and have our staff present on Onboard Tampa Bay. I don't know if you know about Onboard Tampa Bay, but that's been a significant, significant investment by the DOT in workforce development and partnering with some of the local charities to, to provide the support services. And there's a lot of really good stories out of that. Just, I think it'd be good for you all to know, working in the communities, you know, working in East Tampa, and we've placed several hundred people in jobs, on job sites, you know, with, just playing matchmaker, really. So I'd love to have our staff come present on that, if that's something that the council would be amicable to, but I think it's a really cool story.
I, I think that's a, a great idea. We, we do have an economic development division, and I, I believe Chief Bennett can probably get you connected.
Okay.
If not, I can help, so.
Perfect.
One way or the other.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and presenting. We appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, absolutely. Have a good one.
You, too. We're going to go to public comment. We have no registered public speaker, so everybody that's speaking, I'm going to call you one by one, are here, and we're going to have a hard stop at 12 o'clock. Today, we have a very long afternoon anticipated. So the first public speaker that I have is Mr. Rick Fernandez, followed by Ms. Lena Young-Green. Mr. Fernandez. Please state your name.
Good morning. My name's Rick Fernandez. I am resetting my timer. I'm the president of the Tampa Heights Civic Association. I appreciate you all's time, and thank you for the courtesy of listening to me this morning. I'm here today to ask you to consider passage of a resolution opposing further expansion of I-275 north of Hillsborough Avenue to Beers. I'm thankful that this topic has already been teed up. This is, of course, the latest installment of the TBX saga, that many of you have been following along with me since at least 2015. In 2021, the TPO Board amended the tip, the Transportation Improvement Program, removing capacity increases or expansions from this segment of I-275, again, from Hillsborough to Beers. This action was consistent with the clear wishes of the impacted communities, most notably Seminole Heights, Tampa Heights, Ebor, and Points North. This remained the status quo until June of this year, 2024. During the June 2024 tip public hearing, Commissioner Wostel moved to put the description, quote, "capacity project," back into the tip project description for I-275 north of Hillsborough, thus reopening the door for possible expansion. This was done without notice to the public, and, in my opinion, in violation of due process. The motion passed by a vote of eight to seven. The seven no votes came from three members of this council, Council Hertak, Clendenon, and Maniscalco, three members of the B.O.C.C., Cohen, Kemp, and Myers, and one agency representative from HART. The prevailing side, the side in favor of the widening, included Commissioner Wostel, the original movement, Thea, the port, the airport, the school board, Plant City, Temple Terrace, and the planning commission. This burden on our citizens is being imposed upon us by unelected, unaccountable agency representatives in large part, and mayors of two neighboring municipalities. The will of the people, as reflected by our elected officials, was totally ignored. The resolution that I'm requesting today is consistent with precedent set by this, this body. You have previously taken positions in opposition to TBX writ large. You've taken positions in opposition to toll roads through the city. I think that motion was actually made by Council Dingfelder back in the day. What I'm asking you to do is to send a message back to the TPO Board, and in particular to our municipal sister communities, that the city of Tampa is truly opposed to this. Apparently, they're not going to listen to the three of you that are on the TPO Board. Maybe it'll listen to the entire council.
Thank you very much.
I thank you.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Lena Young-Green, you're next, followed by Ms. Connie Burton.
Good morning. Thank you for another opportunity to come to speak for you all. It's always a privilege for us as citizens to be able to talk to our elected officials by just coming before you and participate in public hearing. Today, I'm asking about the trees. In addition to the expansion of interstate, as we heard earlier, it also includes removing trees. DOT removed a bunch of trees, trees along the west side of the interstate for further expansion, particularly in Tampa Heights. At Robles Park, we asked that they put trees rather than put walls. Now, we know that trees cleans the air, it cleans the soil, and it cleans the water, and it also affects the sound. So the fact that DOT insisted that a wall must go there, having trees next to the park would have been much more beneficial overall. We in the community have to breathe those airs, or those air, our residents fish in those ponds where the runoff water goes in from the interstate, and it affects our, our community. I do want to say thank you to the city of Tampa, because you stepped up, and in this discussion, Mr. Brad Suter came and met with us at the park, and he has sent, since sent us a plan to put three, 131 trees inside the park, which is the place that the city of Tampa has control over, and that will improve all of the things that I referred to along that way. So I wanted to thank you all and let you know how much we, the citizens, appreciate it. And please do all you can to avoid DOT continuing to expand more capacity and more space on the interstate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, Ms. Connie Burton, followed by Ms. Stephanie Pointer.
Good morning, Connie Burton. Item number 95 is what I really want to speak to. During the mayor's first minutes term and under the leadership director Vanessa McCleary, two of the infill lots had been promised as demonstration models given to Robin Donaldson and to myself, Connie Burton, but we have yet to be able to live to that fulfillment in the mayor's transitioning Tampa for tomorrow and all of that. So before you move toward, you know, to get, how are you going to do those infill lots? I would like for you to investigate as to why we was not able to move forward on that first promise. You know, I don't really usually pay a lot of attention to the DNC convention, but what was the highlight for me is that the catalyst of African people throughout the whole United States have been, one of the ringing sounds of making freedom come to the reality of even former enslaved people. So state by state, they had to mention the contribution of African people, whether it was a young Frederick Douglass at 34 years old that was courageous enough to go and say, what is your 4th of July to us? If it was a Sister Shirley Chisholm, with her motto of being unbought and unbiased, standing as the first congressional black woman. So now we are seeing history move forward again, and what we call on for in this city government, as the national DNC and the Democratic Party move to consolidate a strong base, we say to what is this Democratic council doing to deal with the ongoing issues that African people in this community continue to deal with? You can't ignore it. We are not flourishing in our community. We do not have the resources. The investment has not been there. When I talk about homes coming into our community at $745,000, no, the city is not building them, but the city set the tone. The city set the tone that now we are seeing folks that was once emblided communities is being forced out of those communities to end up where? And it just continued like a snowball to hell. So we are calling on you to honor Resolution 568. We call on you to look at item number 24, the ongoing promises to the NAACP. In 2023, it was declared that it would get $100,000. It ain't got there yet. In 2024, now it's back on the agenda today. We do not want it to be a mere talking point, because we believe that if the organization is able to have real resources, which $100,000 is nothing to a city that has a $2 billion budget.
Thank you very much. Ms. Stephanie Pointer, followed by Mr. or Pastor Frank Williams. Good morning.
Good morning, Stephanie Pointer. You know, Connie brought up a very important point. We have things that were in the budget last year that haven't been spent. Where'd it go? Where did the money go? Oh, hmm, I don't know. And I'm on the budget committee, but yet, we talk about stuff like the NAACP. But let me go back to what I was going to talk about to start with. I have two teenagers at home. I give them their money. They have a budget. This is your money for the school clothes, right? They go, they spend every penny they have on their school clothes at the mall. Then they come back to mom and go, but mom, I need shoes. There's holes in my chucks. Whose problem is that? It becomes my problem, because my children did a really piss-poor job of do, budgeting, right? And I feel like that's why I'm standing here today, about this $40 million that we need for a forensics lab, because we have already went to the mall and spent all the money on our wants, instead of saving the money for our needs. And I just find it very, very suspect that all of a sudden, this comes up now, two, three weeks, a month after the Riverwalk, where you wanted $26 million then. I'm sorry, but how many mortgages are we going to get? This is a mortgage. They want to mortgage this. Let's get realistic. And, and you know, speaking of budgeting, the FDOT guy, he gets up there and he's like, oh, well, we have, you know, we have a plan for mass transit. We, we want to finish the streetcar. Those are the cheap ways to do things. Building more lines, lanes on the interstate is the expensive way. When my tenants call me the very far, and they say my air conditioner's out, the first thing I tell them is, check the breakers, check the pipes, is the button popped up? Because a lot of times, they're really, really simple fixes upfront that cost us nothing. But in the city of Tampa, we immediately pick up and call the air conditioning folks, and we're ready to spend $300 to have them come fix something as simple as flipping a breaker. We don't use common sense around here. And I, I, like I said, I want to know where Connie's money went, because that is, that keeps happening over and over again. We have financed $330 million worth of debt. Just, I mean, this is just off the top of my head. Hannah Street, giant empty cave. Giant empty cave!
Yes.
Put some, put some TPD folks in there for a while. Use what you got over here for Big Blue, for, for the forensics lab, instead of going and pissing away more money. Because we, we are spending our children's future. It's my job as a parent to teach my children how to budget and how to spend money. It's your job to remind the folks who are coming up here with their double hands out, wanting money for new shoes, but they spent all their money at the mall. Maybe it's time to take something back. Maybe it's time to go back to Macy's and return the clothing you bought so that you can have a pair of shoes. I don't know why we can't.
Thank you very much.
Tell them to give it back.
Pastor Williams, followed by Darryl Heitch.
My name is Pastor Frank Williams, located at 1112 East Scott Street, Paradise Missionary Baptist Church. You know, I can hardly come down here now, but I thank God for blessing me to see another day. Glorify the Holy Father, because that's who I believe in. You know, I'm trying to get a committee that would go to Washington, DC with me, and we need to go there to what y'all call it, bank, not the bank, I'm forgetful now, but Supreme, what you call it, Supreme Court? Yeah. It's nothing about them Supreme. What is who's supreme is Jesus Christ, and that's what I want y'all to know. I want to give y'all a little bit of history, what y'all call Black History. I had a museum there in my church, and the city made me move it out because I had so much going on there. I had shackles and everything, slave shackles and all that stuff. The city made me move it out. One guy had come down, his name was William something. I don't know, and don't give a damn what his name is. But he wanted to take over the church, and so I thought he was doing a good deed. You're going to stay there the rest of your life. I don't know how long my life is yet, but that's what he told me. You know, people give you a verbal comment, and they'll abide by it. When you have to go to court, they tell a whole bunch of lies, and that's where I'm standing now. I don't even go to my church like I used because my life been threatened. Told me, the guy, I think it was William, told me that he catch me walking around the church, he going to take my head off my shoulder, all this kind of stuff. I told y'all that about a year ago, didn't I? Said y'all that was here. But you know what? I know my time ain't long. I ain't worrying about how long I be here. But I do want to get a committee to go to Washington, DC, go to Supreme Court, and tell them about themselves. They don't want little children praying in school? Don't want the little children saying grace in school? What kind of committee is that? That's ridiculous. That's sickening, too. And now, white kids going to school in Texas, shooting up all the little kids and the teachers. Did the same thing in Connecticut. Shoot up all the little kids and teachers because they don't want us to pray in school. That's all we have to do. They pray in the name of Jesus, and I guarantee you, he is to bring us, he give us all the victory. And I thank God. Boy, y'all could just thank, y'all just give us more time on this thing.
Thank you very much, sir.
I ain't got half of it to tell you what I got to say.
Mr. Darryl Heitch and Mr. Andre Hill.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Darryl Heitch.
Good morning.
Ben Franklin said that democracy is two wolves and a sheep, voting on what to have for dinner. And liberty is a well-armed sheep protesting the vote. September 3, 2020, you gave us everything we needed to protest the vote. You gave us everything we needed so that the democracy that was put in place, in terms of how you agreed and you apologized on Resolution Number 568, on how the wrongs and variables had been done against Black people in the city of Tampa. As the wolves of democracy, you understood that when you made this vote, that you clearly identified the wrongs that had happened against Black people in the city of Tampa. You fully understood that. But somewhere in the annals of history, and based upon administration changes and variables like that, you happened to slide this up under the desk and never brought it back out again. December 8, I showed up on your shores, right here, to discuss this resolution. And since December 8, all the way up to date, we've been coming down here consistently talking about Resolution Number 568. The only thing we're asking is the various things that you documented. Former First Lady Michelle Obama stated this week during the DNC, "Do something." She said, "Do something." Do something about the fact that you stated that public-private partnerships to encourage and facilitate investments in low-income areas to reduce inequality, income, and wealth. Do something because you knew this was an issue. Do something about reforms to policing that reduce racial disparities and provide for the safety and vitality of communities of color. Do something! We're just asking you to do something that would reduce policies that eliminate disproportionate mass incarceration of people of color and provide opportunities for meaningful rehabilitation and reentry into the community. Do something.
Yes, sir.
That's all we're asking you to do, is to do something. Don't show up with blank checks, and don't show up with continuously moving the goal line further and further away because we're on the shores of a four-year anniversary of Resolution Number 568. And all we keep coming down here saying, as the former First Lady said, "Do something, guys. Just do something." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Andre Hill, followed by Mr. Mantesna.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Andre Hill. I am working on the Community Garden through the CRA plan. You know, 46 years ago, I left Tampa because as a young Black man, the racism that exists here is very prevalent, and I didn't see any opportunities, especially after my mother at 51 died in 78, my father at 56 died in 1980. I moved away to try to find other opportunities. So, after 46 years, I returned here 11 years ago, and that racism is still here. Now, I understand that you've adopted a resolution acknowledging the racism, but as the young man just said, you got to do something about it. With this Community Garden situation, whoever crafted the wording for the reimbursable grant knew what they were doing. They knew that it would be a problem for nonprofit organizations that want to do something and contribute to the community. They knew that. And every bank, every financial institution that we went to to get a line of credit established, nah, we can't do that. One particular bank, we took in a guarantor with 800 credit score and assets and liquid. They told the guarantor, you, Fifth Third Bank, I'm going to call, tell you who it was, you have to go take out a personal loan, and you know, that's not so. I've done loans for nonprofits in other states where they have the ability to do whatever they want to do. But this is what kind of problems. This sort of stress, the same stress that killed my mother and father, landed me in the hospital back in October with double bypass surgery. The stress of predatory neighbors that wants to buy this property from the lady that's renting us the property to develop this community. She's having health problems now from the stress of her being able to cause somewhere here in the city government and harass her and us about this property. So, it's been an ongoing thing that now the city recognizes that, oh, maybe this type of loan is a problem. So, they've established a new policy to help people get the money that they need, but now at my expense, at the lady that's renting us the property's expense. We are damn almost in the hospital, one leg in the grave right now because of the stress and the influence that these outside developers have. One particular developer that's buying up all Ebor City, that's a descendant of South Africa, who put a Black man out of his building, he hired my architect to cause more problems. So, the young man, Dave Jennis at Coles, he opted to say, "We're going to help you get through this problem." But Andrea Westover need to be talked to.
Thank you very much, sir.
So, I'm asking City Council to talk to Cedric McCray and Dee Reeves about this issue before I land in the hospital.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, our last speaker is Mr. Mantesna. Good morning, sir. Please say your name.
Mantesna, Tampa, Florida. James Brown said, "Black and proud." Mantesna say, "Black and stupid." Black and stupid. African people have to be stupid. 800 years of stupidity. If we have elected, Black elected officials, blacker than me. Never heard of C.L. Patterson, Eric Williams, Thomas Nkara, Huey P. Newton, Maurice Bishop, Kwame Nkrumah, Queen Mother Moore, O'Malley Ashatilla, Fred Hampton. Never talk about reparations. Never heard of Kwame Ntutu. Never heard of Henry Sylvester Williams. But we have people that's allegedly representing us that never heard the word colonialism. Don't know how the ruling class affect or neo-colonialism or capitalism affect African people internationally, affect Africa, affect Australia, New Zealand, Alaska, and other places where white people have invaded. White people, 11% of the population, 11% of the world's population, controls 100% of the world's military, controls 100% of the world economy. If they don't like your game plan, they put you out the game. They doing it all over. The same way they put Black neighborhoods out of Black neighborhoods. When they ready for it, they come in, they gentrify it, they do whatsoever they want to do with it, and they leave us in places where we have to, no bus routes or anything of that nature. But African people have to stand up to that. We have to resist that kind of tyranny. The tyranny that you see going on right now in Palestine, we see people resisting that. They're resisting it. Common people resisting it. It's the same kind of tyranny this city have had us under. I hear people right now, today, in 2024, begging for housing in the city of Tampa.
Yeah.
And I knew back 50 years ago, when people were begging for housing in the city of Tampa, when they had all kinds of schemes and all kinds of promises and none coming through. This city, the elected officials, they have to do something better. Must. It's their duty and responsibility. No ifs, ands, or buts. It's their duty and responsibility to make a difference. And we're seeing some of that's coming through on an international level at the DNC right now because a lot of African people getting up there and speaking that ain't never scared.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, that concludes public comment.
Sir, I signed, I signed.
Did you sign a card?
No.
You did not?
No, no, that was exactly, I just signed on the bridge.
Okay, Ms. Lockett, did you?
Motion to allow her.
Yeah, Ms. Lockett, did you sign up for public comment, too?
Oh, no.
No, okay. Ms. Bullock, come on up.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Valerie Bullock. I'm here to talk about number 24, the resolution for the NAACP. The NAACP have been a hub of the community, not only for Black and Brown people, but for all people. It unites different cultures and nationality. And for the last years that I known of, NAACP have only been given $10,000. Now, it was a resolution that was passed that they were supposed to get $100,000. That money haven't been released to the NAACP. And how do that affect me and people in my community? The NAACP, they have empowerment workshops, they have all kinds of entrepreneur training and incentives, and they help you get your licenses and get your businesses established. About $100,000 being withheld, that's business leaders in my community, like me, not being able to get our business up and going, are not getting the support that we need. I go down 27th Street, I see the stores down there. Those business leaders, most of them are from Middle Eastern. They have stores. They're able to get their business going. I would like the same opportunity, and people in my neighborhood would like the same opportunity. We all have big ideas and big dreams, and the NAACP say, "Yes, we're going to partner with you. Yes, we're going to walk you through this and show you how to do this." But without funding, it's virtually impossible because we know that you need money to get money, and money make the world go round. So, please, in the spirit of, I don't know, just release the money. Because too many times, we've came down here and we heard this, and it just rurs. It's like things are being said and done symbolically, but we have no intention of furthering, of doing what we said we were going to do. And that right there is what messes up the trust, and it just breaches us, the city council, the city of Tampa, from the citizen. If you say you're going to do it, let's do it, and let's do it as quick as possible.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. And we had a motion from Councilmember Hurtak. Do we have a second for the public comment? Second from Councilmember Henderson. All in favor? Aye. All right. Any opposed? That concludes public comment. We're going to go to our committee reports. As was stated for item number three, we're going to move that to staff report. So, Councilmember Viera, can you move four through 18?
I move four through 18.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Yes, sir?
To do with the school district. And my firm works with the school district, so I'm going to recuse myself.
All right, so let's do a separate.
Can I please make a motion to accept my Form 8?
We have a motion from Councilmember Carlson, and second from Councilmember Viera. All in favor?
Aye.
So, Councilmember Viera, can you amend that to?
So, I move four through 11 and 13 through 18.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Viera, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then do a separate vote for item number 12.
I move 12, please.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Viera, second from Councilmember Henderson. Yes, sir? All in favor?
Motion carried. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Motion carried unanimously with Carlson abstaining. And Clinton being absent.
Okay, and now we have, all right, then that covers. Thank you very much. All right, next is the Neighborhood and Community Affairs Committee, Councilmember Henderson.
Yes, Chair, thank you for Ms. Valerie and Ms. Connie. Moving the resolution today means that the check is coming. So, item 24, that's what's happening today, so you know. Gladly, I move items 19 through 30, Neighborhood, Community Affairs.
Through 33.
19 through 33, thank you.
We have a motion from Councilmember Henderson, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Yeah.
Can I also move 54 through 60? Alan Clinton is not here today.
Wait, we'll get there, we'll get there.
Mr. Chair.
Wait.
Can I just make a comment on those?
I want to make a comment. Go ahead.
Go ahead, you want to go first?
So, now that we've voted on it, after the meeting or tomorrow morning when they prepare it, I signed the ordinance. Then it goes to the mayor for final signature, and that's written.
It's coming.
Then it's coming, so. Councilmember Carlson.
Yeah, as the public, members of public said, that money was approved a year, year and a half ago. It shouldn't have taken back and forth and fighting. No other nonprofit that I'm aware of has had to go through that kind of fighting. It's not a city council issue, but we should not treat nonprofits of any kind like that. Second, I'm happy to see the Florida orchestras in there. I didn't have anything to do with it, but I'm glad we're supporting them.
Good. All right, Councilmember Hurtak, 34 through 40, with the exception of 38, because we're going to hear that with the three.
Yes. I move items 34 through 37 and 39 and 40.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hurtak, second from Councilmember Viera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Miranda, 41 through 45.
41 through 45.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Viera. All in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson, 46 through 53.
Move 46 through 53.
We have a motion from Councilmember Carlson, we have second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And Councilmember Henderson, 54 through 60.
I move for Mobility Asset Management Committee, items 54 through 60.
We have a motion from Councilmember Henderson, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
And Councilmember Miranda, would you like to make a motion to set the public hearing for 64 through 61 through 64?
I move the public hearing second.
For the date to be 61 through 64 of those four items.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Viera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. May I make a suggestion, maybe a recommendation? To take the opportunity to the items that were moved to staff reports because they are high-ticket items, number 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, and 91, there are no staff to be present for that, and to let staff know that those items are from past, maybe council will be willing to take it up at this point.
You want to do it now? All right, let me get through it.
That's a suggestion.
86 through 91?
Yes.
Since it's under mine, I'll just go ahead and move 86 through 91. Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hurtak to move 86 through 91. Second from Councilmember Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Let me just mark those off. May I have a motion to open the 10 o'clock public hearing? We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, these are non-quasi-judicial up until number 69, then I'll swear folks in after, so. So, Mr. Massey, sixty-five?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, good morning, Morris Massey, Legal Department. This is an ordinance, second reading on an ordinance that would amend the notice process for, uh, Chapter one sixty-three Development Agreements would require annual monitoring reports, uh, be filed in connection with those, um, to you all. This was done per your request and is being processed for second reading now.
Councilmember Hurtak? No? Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item sixty-five? I see no one.
Move to close.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Henderson, all in favor? Aye. Councilmember Viera, would you mind reading sixty-five?
Yes, sir.
I move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption ordinance to the city of Tampa, Florida, relating to development agreements adopted pursuant to the Florida Local Government Development Agreement Act, rescinding City of Tampa ordinance number eighty-eight dash one four four in its entirety and adopting in its place updated development agreement procedures and requirements, including a notice and annual reporting requirements in Article two, Chapter seventeen point five in the City of Tampa Code, which Article two shall be entitled Development Agreement Procedures, amending the title of Chapter one seven point five in the City of Tampa Code to Affordable Housing Development Agreements, Concurrence Management System and Sustainability, amending Section twenty-seven dash six of the City of Tampa Code to include this ordinance as part of the city's land development code, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Viera, second from Councilmember Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Clinton being absent.
Thank you very much. Item number sixty-six.
Ross Sammons, Development Coordination, um, file number VAC twenty-four dash zero five. Is ordinance being considered for second reading and adoption? I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sammons? Nope. Right, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number sixty-six? I see no one. Can I get a motion to close? Motion closed from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Henderson, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Councilmember Henderson?
Yes, Chair, I move file number VAC twenty-four dash zero five, an ordinance being considered for second reading and adoption, an ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning a portion of Channel Side Drive Right-of-Way, located north of Third Avenue, south of Fourth Avenue, east of Nucio Parkway, and west of the merger between Channel Side Drive and Fourth Avenue within the plat of Leslie subdivision in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, as more particularly described in Section two hereof, subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions, as more particularly set forth herein, providing for enforcement and penalties for violations, providing for definitions, interpretations, and repealing conflicts, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Henderson, second from Councilmember Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Clinton being absent.
Thank you very much. Item number sixty-seven, we have a substitute ordinance. Mr. Sammons?
Ross Sammons, Development Coordination, presenting file number VAC twenty-four dash zero seven. This is a substitute ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions for the gentlemen? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on sixty-seven? I see no one. May I have a motion to close?
Motion closed.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Henderson, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Councilmember Hurtak, the substitute?
Yes. File number VAC twenty-four dash zero seven, substitute ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning Grant Avenue Right-of-Way, located north of the Hillsborough River, south Van Dyke Place, east of Nebraska Avenue, and west of the intersection of Van Dyke Place and River Cove Street, within the plat of Fanny Pride subdivision in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, as more fully described in Section two hereof, subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions, as more particularly set forth herein, providing for enforcement and penalties for violations, providing for definitions, interpretations, and repealing conflicts, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hurtak, second from Councilmember Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Clinton being absent.
Thank you very much. Item number sixty-eight?
Ross Sammons, Development Coordination, presenting file number VAC twenty-four dash fourteen. This ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Nope. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on sixty-eight?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Henderson, all in favor? Aye, Councilmember Carlson, sixty-eight?
I'd like to move item number sixty-eight, file number VAC twenty-four dash fourteen, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning that alleyway located north of Washington Street, south of Jackson Street, east of Brush Street, and west of Nebraska Avenue, within the plat of Drew's addition to Town of Tampa subdivision in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, as more particularly described in Section two hereof, subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions, as more particularly set forth herein, providing for enforcement and penalties for violations, providing for definitions, interpretations, and repealing conflicts, providing for severability, providing effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Carlson, second from Councilmember Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Hurtak being absent at vote and Clinton being absent.
All right, thank you very much. Item sixty-nine?
Ross Sammons, Development Coordination, presenting file number VAC twenty-four dash fifteen. This ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sammons? Nope. Do we have anybody in the public for item number sixty-nine? Can I get a motion to close?
Motion closed.
Okay.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Henderson, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number sixty-nine, we left off with Councilmember Miranda?
Thank you, Chairman. Item number sixty-nine, file number VAC twenty-four dash fifteen. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance in the City of Tampa, Florida, vacating, closing, discontinuing, abandoning that alleyway located north of Dr. Martha Luther King Boulevard, south of Ida Street, east of Short Thirty-Street, and west of Thirty-Street, within the plat of North Campo Bello subdivision, the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, and more particularly described in Section two thereof, subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions, more particularly set forth herein, providing for enforcement of penalty for violation, providing for definition, interpretation, and repealing conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Viera, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Or, I'm sorry, record your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Hurtak being absent at vote and Clinton being absent.
All right, we're gonna go into our quasi-judicial, uh, public hearings. If you're gonna speak on.
Move to open hearings.
No, no, the, the hearings are open, but we need to, um, swear anybody that's going to be speaking, seventy through seventy-five, they're quasi-judicial. If you're gonna be speaking, please stand, raise your right hand, and we'll swear you in. All right, item number seventy.
Good morning, Chairman and Council. Thank you so much, LaShawn Doc, Development Coordination. Item seventy is before you for second reading. This is file SU two twenty-four oh one. This is a special use two request for air-conditioned storage in the CBD. It's for the property located at six-ten East Zach Street. Um, site plan modifications were required to be made between first and second reading. Those changes were made. Um, the site plan has been certified and provided to the clerk, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Nope. All right, do we have an applicant? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Please state your name.
Good morning, Addie Clark, four hundred North Ashley Drive. Um, so LaShawn did a great job at summarizing that. As she mentioned, we did make a revision or added a note to the site plan. Following first reading, there was some discussion. Um, so just wanted to put on the record that we worked with staff, and then a note has been added saying that if demolished, um, we would have to come before you again to request AC self-storage south of Harrison Street.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item seventy?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Viera, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Councilmember Viera, seventy?
Yes, sir, movement ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance approving a special use permit S two, approving air-conditioned storage in CBD one, Central Business District, zoning district as in or in the general vicinity of six-ten East Zach Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section one hereof, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Viera, second from Councilmember Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carried with Hurtak voting no and Clinton being absent.
Thank you very much. Item number seventy-one?
Thank you, Chairman and Council, LaShawn Doc, Development Coordination. Item seventy-one is a request to rezone the property from RS fifty to RM eighteen. This is for the property located at fifty-six oh seven North Thirty-Street. Um, this is before you this morning for second reading and adoption. There's no site plan associated with this request, um, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number seventy? I'm sorry, uh, is there an applicant for seventy-one? Do we have anybody in the public for seventy-one? May I have a motion to close?
Shall I move?
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Viera to close. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Councilmember Henderson, seventy?
Yes. File number REZ twenty-three ninety-eight, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of fifty-six oh seven North Thirty-Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section one, from zoning district classifications, RS fifty residential single-family to RM eighteen residential multifamily, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Clinton being absent.
All right, item number seventy-two?
Thank you again, Council, LaShawn Doc, Development Coordination. Item seventy-two is REZ twenty-four twelve. It's for the property located at sixty-seven eighteen North Rome Avenue. This is a request to rezone from RS fifty residential single-family to PD plan development for residential single-family attached uses on site. Um, this is before you for second reading. Um, site plan modifications were required to be made between first and second reading. Those changes have been made. The plan has been certified and provided to the clerk. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Let's see, none. Do we have an applicant for item number seventy-two? The applicant first, and then we'll go to the public. Yes, sir, um, oh, if you've walked in since we sworn folks in and you're gonna speak, please stand, raise your right hand. This is for seventy-two, three, four, and five. If you're gonna speak, please raise your right hand, and we'll swear you in.
Yes.
All right, please state your name, sir.
Uh, my name's Kevin Johnson, uh, here on behalf of Shakers Development and, uh, our client, Martin. Um, met with you on the first hearing. The request was, excuse me, I'm just got off the plane. But, uh, met with, uh, the Riverbend community. Um, went out to volunteer a little bit, spent like an hour with Mr. Kramer, Hank Kramer. He's like one of the leaders of the community. Drove around the neighborhood. She showed me everything going on, the, the ins and outs, the problems with the neighborhood, some of the, uh, safety and, uh, infrastructure issues. Um, so I really got a good understanding of what's going on, um, as well as just meeting some of the people in the community. Um, so got that done. Um, the, the following meeting went extremely well. Um, of course, there, you know, just were questions about our project and what, how we intend to, uh, make sure that it's, uh, not being, becoming part of the problem and, and kind of like just helping the problem. Um, so, so we did all of that. Um, and then moreover, uh, our project, uh, one of the things, so there's a few things that we, we hope to do once we get to permitting and construction documents if all things go well today. Uh, some of those things include like just landscape improvements, um, putting, uh, birches in and, uh, magnolias, trees that are very, um, good at, you know, kind of taking up extra stormwater. Um, and, uh, yeah, I mean, there, that, and then we also, we already have a stormwater vault that, that should be more than enough to, uh, hold our, the capacity for our site. So, um, those are the things that we did. Um, sorry, I'm like on the thousand right now. But, uh, yeah, we, we met with the community. That was, I, I'm extremely grateful to actually spend some time with Hank. That was, that was actually, uh, being, both of us being natives, that, that was, that was cool. So, um, apologize to the Riverbend community for not doing that initially, but, uh, I'm glad that we did it the second time around, so.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Anything else, sir? No, we'll go to public comment.
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item seventy-two? Mr. Kramer, come on up. Please state your name.
My name's Hank Kramer. I represent Riverbend Neighborhood Civic Association. Um, I live at five-nine-three-three North Rome Avenue in Tampa, uh, just down the street from the subject property. We want to go on record today, uh, as, uh, objecting to the hearing, uh, and the subsequent, any subsequent vote that's made today due to the, uh, uh, the order given by the Thirteenth Judicial Circuit Court regarding jurisdiction of the city council, uh, regarding this, uh, regarding, uh, such, uh, resolutions. Uh, so we request a reschedule in that regard. I noticed a couple of the other rezones weren't noticed today or didn't, weren't presented. But, uh, yeah, we did meet with the guys. We had a very nice time. Uh, uh, seemed like a, a good quality guys, Seemed like a good quality guys, but there's a lot of stuff that didn't get completed in our transactions. There were a couple of meetings that we wanted to make subsequent that weren't completed or fulfilled, and we haven't really met since then. There was an indication that they'd be adjusting the landscape there, not just in terms of providing trees, but putting swales in. We took them back to the area of the, the Boys and Girls Club that the city built in the back and had a problem and with the stormwater and had to condemn five properties because of the flow that came to that property, showed them those empty spots and the vault that had to be put in, in that area, subsequent to the building of the Boys and Girls Club. This created a problem in the neighborhood, and it is right behind the area that they wanna build, so there's more work that needs to be done. Also, you heard at the first reading, the mess at that intersection, which is just south of a terrible intersection where there's Roman Sly, where we have a ball field, we have an academy right across the street, we have a lot of interaction taking place there with children, and we'd like to see that crosswalk done, something done. What we'd really like to do is be able to meet with folks from the city to see what needs to be done in this area. The gentlemen have been very forthcoming and looking to see that, oh, now we get it, yeah, this, now we see the neighborhood. They hadn't seen any of this before, and coming from East Tampa, they're familiar with some of the problems that we've had in terms of stormwater and things not being held up. Another problem that we have and why I wanna bring this out is that the lumping in of Riverbend with the university district is not really appropriate, and so the development that's taken place there now with lot splits, you'll probably see us reacting to a lot more of these now because they're not being built with attention to the stormwater runoff in the area. And that's causing problems that can be multiplied here. We have an area where we have five homes, all of a sudden we now have eight homes, and subsequent or inter, or other lots in the area are getting flooded out. So we need to have some meetings of the mind, and we'd look forward to some type of meeting with not only the developers, but with yourselves.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on item number seventy-two? All right, if the applicant would like, there's time for rebuttal at this point.
Motion to close.
All right, we have a motion to close from Councilmember Henderson. Do we have a second? Wait, Mr. Mast.
I just wanted to clarify on the record, since this was raised, that you've already been advised by Ms. Ellman as the city attorney that you may proceed with quasi judicial hearings and resounding decisions despite the Thirteenth Judicial Court decision.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to close from Councilmember Henderson. Do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Councilmember Carlson.
I'd like to move item seventy-two, file number REZ twenty-four dash twelve, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of six-seven-one-eight North Rome Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification RS fifty residential single family to PD Plan Development residential single family attached, providing effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Carlson, send for Councilmember Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carried with Hertak voting no and Clint Dennehy being absent.
Thank you very much. And then for seventy-three, four, and five, Councilmember Henderson, were you able to review the record?
Yes, I was prepared to vote for those.
All right, you are good to go. Item number seventy-three.
Thank you, Council. Item seventy-three is REZ twenty-four thirty-two. The request is to rezone the property from RM sixteen, the CI. This is a Euclidian request, so there is no site plan associated with this request. This is for the property located at twenty-three oh six North Forty-third Street, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? All right, do we have an applicant here for item number seventy-three? Nope, no applicant? All right. Anybody here for a public comment on item number seventy-three? No, can I get a motion to close?
Shall I move?
We have a motion, wait.
Quickly, before you vote, if Councilwoman Henderson could confirm on the record she's reviewed the prior.
I did.
I asked her.
I did, I did.
Teachers are always prepared, always prepared. Councilmember Hertak?
Yes, will be.
Let's close. Can I get a motion to close?
Second.
Motion from Councilmember, who was the motion, ma'am? Motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second from Viera, all in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Hertak.
Item number seventy-three, file number REZ twenty-four dash thirty-two, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of twenty-three oh six North Forty-third Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classifications RM sixteen residential multifamily to CI commercial intensive, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Hertak, send for Councilmember Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Clint Dennehy being absent.
Thank you. Item number seventy-four.
Thank you, Council LaShawn Doc Development Coordination. Item seventy-four is file number REZ twenty-four forty-four. This item is before you this morning for second reading. This is for the property located at fifty-four oh two Laurel Street and folio numbers one-one-two four eight five zero one seven seven and one-one-two four four five zero zero one zero. The request is to rezone the property from PD to PD Plan Development, and this is to allow for the uses of business professional office, warehouse, and hotel. Site plan modifications were required to be made between first and second reading. Those changes have been made. The plan has been certified and provided to the clerk. I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Doc? Do we have an applicant for item number seventy-four? Anybody in the public wish to speak on seventy-four?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Viera, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Councilmember Miranda, seventy-four.
Thank you, Chairman. File number REZ twenty-four slash forty-four, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of fifty-four two Laurel Street and folio numbers one-one-two four eight five slash zero one seven seven and one-one-two four four five slash zero zero one zero in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification PD Plan Development to PD Plan Development, business professional office, warehouse, hotels, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Viera, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with Clint Dennehy being absent.
Thank you very much. Item number seventy-five. Item number seventy-five, we have a lot of people that are registered as applicant representative. I don't know if they're here in person. Do we have anybody on, on camera? We do? All right. Were they sworn in? All right, so let's swear in the people, 'cause they're the same, for Camille Gooden, Michael Yates, Eileen Pope, Eric Hoyer, and Eric Ryder. They might be here and some might be online, so if you're online and you're gonna speak, please raise your right hand, and we'll swear you in. They may not need to speak, I don't, I don't know.
Mr. Chair, they're all on the applicant team.
Huh?
They're all on the applicant team.
So they'll be, okay.
Yes, sir.
We don't expect them to speak. Okay, item number seventy-five, Ms. Doc, go ahead.
Thank you, Council LaShawn Doc Development Coordination. Item seventy-five is file REZ twenty-four fifty. This is a request for rezoning, to rezone the property from RM sixteen, RM twenty-four, CG, CI, to PDA Plan Development Alternative. This is for mixed-use development for residential and commercial uses on site. This is for the properties located at thirty-six oh one and thirty-eight fourteen North Central Avenue and five oh one East Lake Avenue. Site plan modifications were required to be made between first and second reading. Those changes were made. The plan has been certified and provided to the clerk, and I'm available if you have any questions.
All right, any questions? No? All right, applicant, and we have a, an ordinance, and we also have a resolution with it, so go ahead, sir, please state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller, four oh one East Jackson Street, number twenty-one hundred. This is the Robles Park rezoning. We appreciated your support before, we appreciate that again today. Our entire team, including PMG and the Housing Authority is here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the gentleman? Nope. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number seventy-five? Come on up, please state your name. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning, Connie Burton. Twenty-plus years of living in Robles Park, and I could tell you, during that time, all of the things that the people required but was denied, so they can improve their quality of life. What we saw was social engineering that provided a base so people could have true numbers of showing how poverty stayed intact, how black people, young black men was fostered into the criminal justice system coming out of Robles Park. Ask the leadership from Robles Park, that has been the same leadership for the last twenty years, how many people was able to move toward homeownership? How many people was able to create real businesses out of Robles Park? But now, that we see this cringe for development, which I have no doubt will pass, like all of the Big Six public housing, that was identified as blighted, where you had a high concentration of black people that only had hope in this city, watched their lives being destroyed. And so now we have rich white developers come through, with the trail leaders sometime being black folks, saying how now they finna provide this wonderful entity for that community. Well, how many people from that community is gonna come back? Ten percent? Two percent?
None.
What happened to the quality of life that was promised those people? The best chance we had living in Robles Park was under the Reagan's administration, when we was allowed, under Jack Kemp, to allow leadership to come from the bottom up. That was destroyed, and we watched all of the Big Six, now even that in North Boulevard looking over the river. No blacks allowed. Parks and Recreation, Boys and Girls Clubs destroyed. So you attach yourself to this. You're no different than the same people of the Bull Connors era, where black folks had nothing, and we still have nothing. I got a eighty-four-year-old mother right now living in Robles Park, trying to get a simple placement, and being told to go back to the doctor's vicar's board to get this letter to prove that she need a living aid. But the Housing Authority spent over five hundred thousand dollars evicting me the first time. I guarantee you my mother gonna get her placement, or the developers got a real good fight on their hand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? All right, anything, any rebuttal, Mr. Kramer, for seventy-five?
Yes, sir, Jake Kramer again. I'd just like to bring up Mr. David Alonia from the Housing Authority briefly.
All right, come on up. Excuse me, please. Thank you very much. Yes, sir, please state your name.
David Alonia, Director of Real Estate Development with Tampa Housing Authority. Good morning, and thank you for the privilege to be here. Just wanna set the record straight. And you, you know what we've done in the community in terms of redevelopment. We did Central Park, which is now the Encore. We're now doing North Boulevard, which is part of the West River redevelopment. And throughout this process, when we do this, we engage our residents. We go through the process of relocation, and we case manage them after relocation and keep them focused, keep them intact, and, and inform them of the progress of what we are doing. They make the choice of whether to come back. They are given the forced right of refusal. During the relocation process, we train them, we provide information as it relates to relocation one-on-one, section eight, and they choose, they make their choices in terms of where they're supposed to go. And we also get transportation, take them around the city, so that they can see for themselves. And we provide all the resources, and, and we make sure that they come back. Given the record that we have, usually about seventy percent of them choose to stay within the Housing Authority, within the portfolio that we have. We have ten to fifteen percent that choose to return, and we keep track of all this information, and we case manage them. So what you're hearing in terms of, you know, being gentrified, pushed out, that is not true, and we have the information to prove it.
Thank you very much. If we have any more interruptions, I'm gonna rule you out of order. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all we have.
All right, anybody else wishes to speak? Can I get a motion to close?
Shall I move?
Motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, send for Councilman Viera, all in favor?
Aye.
Where did I leave off? Mr. Viera?
Yes, sir.
For seventy-five, and then we have the resolution.
Movement ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity, three-six-oh-one and three-eight-one-four North Central Avenue and five-oh-one East Lake Avenue, the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification RM residential multifamily, RM twenty-four residential multifamily, CI commercial intensive, and CG commercial general to PDA Plan Development Alternative residential single family attached to multifamily storefront residential office, personal services, retail bakery pharmacy, bank, medical, and business professional office, medical clinic, cemetery, daycare, nursery, vocational and business school, private recreational facility, indoor clubs, place of assembly, community garden, private place of religious assembly, restaurant, providing an effective date.
We have a motion.
Second.
Councilman Viera, send for Councilmember Miranda, Councilmember Henderson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is in my district, and I just wanna really, you know, I understand the historical aspect of anytime we come in and make changes to historically black spaces. Robles Park is a community that has had, you know, some challenges, and I do feel it is important for me to say that the legwork of the high level of community engagement did take place. Those meetings with me, I am satisfied with that level of community engagement and their participation in all of the things and the services that are going to be there. So, moving forward, we can't go back, but we are moving forward with good intention, and I feel the things that are in place that are going to improve the Robles Park community is going to be a benefit to even the current residents who have the right to return once this project is complete. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Please record your vote.
Motion carried with Carlson voting no and Clint Dennehy being absent.
We have a motion to move the resolution. Councilmember Miranda?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Henderson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Motion carried with Carlson voting no and Clint Dennehy being absent.
Thank you very much. Item number seventy-six. And ma'am, do we take public hearing as well in this? Okay. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Rebecca Johns, Labor Department. This is the second public hearing for the development agreement for Robles.
Oh, I'm sorry. Move to open the ten-thirty public hearings. Motion from Councilmember Viera, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
This is the second public hearing for the Robles Park development agreement to accompany the rezoning that was just approved. The site plan that was just approved will be attached to this development agreement. The developer is here, if you have any questions. I am here if you have any questions.
Any questions? Nope. Any questions, sir?
Good morning, just a couple of comments. Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller, four oh one East Jackson Street. This development agreement came about from discussions with Susan Johnson before she retired, looking at lessons we all learned from projects like West River, big projects we felt like a development agreement on the front end is gonna help everybody have a good understanding as this project builds out over the long term. And Councilwoman Henderson, as we committed to with other large projects, if council ever wants an update, because this will take a while, we're always happy to come give you an update on the project, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on seventy-six? Yes, ma'am. Come on up, please state your name.
Good morning, Valerie Bullock. The reason I have a problem with all of these moving forward PAD's plan developments is because we've been begging for this for years. We never was able to get it, but as soon as gentrification comes along and the neighborhood is getting whitewashed, now everybody throw out the red carpet. We want this in the neighborhood, we want that in the neighborhood. And I heard the councilwoman say that, yes, everybody could go back. I am a living witness. I have relatives, they were not allowed back. So everybody's not allowed to go back to these, to the apartments. Once they chair down the projects with the rats and they build a nice apartments, everybody's not allowed to go back. Over at West River, it's a twenty-five-page application. They want a thirty-year criminal history, and you got to have A-one credit. So these are some of the barriers, you might wanna go back, but you can't go back. And it's a twenty-five-page application. Ma'am, I would like to take this at this home. She say, no, you can't leave the office with it. So it might look good on paper and say, yeah, y'all can come back, we're gonna bring you all back. That is not true. It's too many barriers put in place so that the people can't come back. Tampa Housing Authority no longer is in the process, it no longer manage apartments. They have property managed group. Most of these people are Spanish, most of them, and I think they're all hooked up together, I'm not sure, but whatever the process is, people that look like me do not get the opportunity to go back. You can look at Elamay, the old Central Park projects. How many black people stay there? Give me a percentage, Housing Authority man. You can't even give me a percentage, it's less than ten. The process is not fair. That's what I'm saying, it's not fair. And we need to do something about that. And another thing, all the developers, they come from out of town, got their soups on and everything, don't even know people in the neighborhood, don't know the flavor of the neighborhood, but they come to get the money. And when they come, we need to put some stipulations on it. If you all are gonna build these apartments here, we want forty, we want, we want X amount for the people who live forty percent below the poverty level, the AMI level in Hillsborough County. And we need twenty-five percent of these based on your income. Usually when I was getting food stamps, it came with stipulation. We're gonna give you these food stamps, but you could work, but you can't make no more than this. Since you all are the one that's, that's opened up the doors for these people, let's put some stipulations on it, 'cause too many time the builders come in and they have their stipulation, and we just throw money at them, throw money at them. And we, we not, we can't do that this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment? Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to close? Motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, send for Councilmember Viera, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Who would like to move the resolution?
Shall I move?
Motion from Councilmember Henderson, we have a second from Councilmember Viera, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, next up is the item number seventy-seven. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Council, McLean Evans, Assistant City Attorney. Item number seventy-seven is the annual rule adoption for the stormwater non-advalorem service assessment. It has not been changed, the current rate is eighty-two dollars per ESU. It has been that same rate since 2015. I and staff are available if you have any questions.
Yes, ma'am. So, just for, for the public's knowledge, the stormwater service assessment has already reached its maximum level. Is that correct? It won't go higher than?
That is correct. There are two different types of stormwater assessments. Both of them have. This particular one is the service assessment for operation and maintenance of the stormwater system and applies to the whole city, and it reached its maximum level at 2015.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item seventy-seven? Please silence your cell phones, please silence your cell phones, and please silence your cell phones. Thank you very much. I'm gonna put mine on, too. I have a, I have a great ringtone. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Stephanie Pointer. If I'm wrong, somebody please correct me, but I said this on Monday, so we'll just talk about it again for a minute. When we look, when we look at this assessment, there's a whole lot of money going towards salaries, but in this stormwater assessment fund, fifteen-point-five million, twelve-point-nine going to salaries. I'm sorry, if we're, if this is a stormwater assessment, I'm gonna tell you this, I want my money going towards projects, not people, especially people who have the words Vision Zero next to their job description, especially folks who have the word Mobility next to their job description. If you're gonna employ stormwater people out of the stormwater budget, that's fine. But, I mean, nobody bothered to call me, I said this on Monday, and you know what? said this on Monday, and you know what, I'm not an expert by any stretch of the imagination about anything but digging around in the budget, which I love to do. But, you know, when we got all these projects here and they don't have, they don't, that's eighteen million, something like that, anyway. But then when we get over here, we've got like two hundred million dollars worth of project. Now, we met with stormwater folks yesterday and they said that a lot of these are going to bond off in the next year. I don't really understand that, but that some of the bonds are going away. But I want to make sure that, that these stormwater bonds are being spent to impact our communities, not just paying for people. Because as much as those people are hardworking, they're not standing out there with a barrier keeping water from encroaching on somebody's house. They're not keeping the water from coming into people's homes. They're not creating something that is going to help us with our, with our flood insurance in the, in the city. And you know what? They have said in these meetings that this impacts our insurance rates. It can also impact our bond ratings for the city of Tampa. So, somebody needs to ask where the money's going and why the money's going the way it is. And you know what, if I'm wrong, pick up the phone and call me, everybody here knows my email address, everybody here knows my phone number, but I haven't gotten a call since Monday that says, Stephanie, you're wrong about what you're talking about. I'm okay with being wrong. I just want to ask the questions. And the number one question I want to ask here today is, why is all our stormwater bond going to personnel, not to projects?
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on item seventy-seven? Yes, Vic, do you have anything that you would like to add, sir?
Yes, morning Chair, morning Council, Vic B. Day, Director of Mobility Department. So, the salaries for stormwater employees are for the employees that do maintenance on the system, that are supervisors of the team that does maintenance. And if you look at our operations division, about forty percent of the staff of about a hundred and sixty people are stormwater operations personnel. These are the same folks that respond before storms, these are the same folks that respond after storms, these are the folks that hunker down during emergencies. And, and so that's what the salaries are going towards. And if the term mobility is used, and I'll need to look at the document a little closer, mobility is the department. And stormwater is a division within mobility, there's engineering and operations of course.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes ma'am, anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, as legal, I would just add that the stormwater service assessment, as with all non-advalorm assessments, have very strict parameters on how those dollars can be spent. So, in this particular case, the dollars collected by the city under the stormwater service assessment can only be used for stormwater operation and maintenance. They couldn't be used for some of the other projects or divisions and departments that may have been mentioned.
Councilmember Carlson.
Yes, I did speak to Ms. Pointer about this and I looked at the documents myself and the way I read them, it appears that that rule has been broken, or that the titles are mislabeled. And so, I would recommend that City Council use this investigative authority to, to take a forensic look at this budget to make sure it's been used correctly. But until that's done, I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
This budget or this specific assessment?
Both. I'm going to vote against both. The, there's a lot of money that's wasted in this city. We know that things have been shuffled around, we know, we've talked about shell games in the past. I don't know if that's happening in this case or not, but by the way things are labeled, it looks like, it looks like money in stormwater is being paid for other things. And if it's not, we need to, as Mr. B. Day said, we need to relabel it. But it's, it, it, you know, when we've, when we've been suspicious in the past and we've looked at budgets, we found that what we looked for was true most of the time. And our concerns were real, the concerns of the community were real. And I think we need to carefully look at this. No criticism of Mr. B. Day, but how this was put together and how it's being presented, on the surface, it looks like there are issues and I think they need to be investigated. This was a very controversial tax when it was approved before I got on council. And the public feels that it should be, the people that are not in areas that flood feel like they're subsidizing the areas you are, the people that are in the areas of flood wonder why things aren't happening faster. And to Ms. Pointer's point, if, if a lot of money's been spent on, on staff and not on projects, the public is not seeing much of the results of the, of the stormwater tax, they're not seeing the flood relief. And so, we need to look at the, look at the budget forensically. Thank you.
Councilmember Miranda, you had your microphone.
I've got a couple of things. First of all, I'm not opposed to looking at some for an investigation, but I got to know what the investigation is about, where, where's the flaws at, that's number one. And number two, this tax may be controversial, but what it really does is the new people or the same area that's something more, more development, we want them to pay, not to go citywide, let the citizens of City of Tampa have no indirect or direct benefit from this, being charged with that tax. That's why this is on this development alone.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hurtak.
Thank you. Is there a way that we can postpone this vote, or the, the moving of this resolution until we, until Mr. B. Day can clarify what some of those mobility departments are? Because I had the same questions when I went through, I could, it wasn't clear. And Mr. B. Day, is that something that you could do?
So, we can take a look at this. I believe we can bring this up at the next council meeting if need. We are still within the tax roll deadline here. However, let me clarify again on some of these positions. A majority of our stormwater flows off of roadways into the system and then into outfalls unless it's a closed basin system like New Campa. So, if there's any roadway work related to stormwater, it isn't a surprise at all, which is why many cities' transportation and stormwater departments are connected and are under one roof. And so, for example, any capital project that we have with stormwater includes paving, includes other peripheral street furniture, and that is because they're intricately connected. When we do paving of roads as well, one key part of it is profiling the roadway to direct stormwater. That's the main reason for profiling the roadway into roadway systems. So, if these are, and we'd have to look at the scale of this, but I do not believe this reaches any muster of significant concern, but we'll look at the documents. But I do want council and the public to understand that stormwater and roadways are intricately connected. More water flows over roadways into our systems than the systems themselves who are through our pipes.
Thank you. Ms. Evans, can you, since, can you clarify, you said that none, that all of the money has to be spent within stormwater. Does that, is that, is that stormwater, does that include paving via the, the resolution or the, the ordinance that was, that was created?
McLean Evans, Assistant City Attorney. Councilmember Henderson, an answer to your question, you're starting to get into the technical details, but beyond sort of my legal expertise. However, the legal requirements of the dollars collected under the non-advalorm stormwater assessment is that those dollars be spent for operation and maintenance of the stormwater system. Now, if you have to tear up a road or create a new area to install or maintain a stormwater system, we have a duty and obligation to put that back. So, that could be costs that would be normally included in that. How exactly the components of a store, each individual stormwater project are defined, I would need to get some help from some of the staff engineers for that.
Okay, thank you. And so, I'm still going to say, if there's, if there's wiggle room in being able to maybe extend this public hearing so that we can get answer to these questions, I, I would prefer that, because I would rather not have to vote no. But I am, I mean, that makes sense, but I'd still like to see it. So, that, that's just my recommendation.
Yeah, we can kick it off till like September fifth, maybe, that's the next council meeting. If not, um...
Could we do that September third?
There, I'm going to have to defer to, to Mr. B. Day. Is the tax, is the, is the tax collector's deadline September fifteenth, do you know, or is it before then?
I, I don't know. I'll, I'll need to confirm that.
Let's, let's hold off until we get, we can put it towards, you know, later in the agenda.
Okay, if you could, if you could put it back on the agenda, because if we miss that deadline, we miss the whole assessment for the year, and I will check on that for you.
Mr. B. Day, if you can get us, anyone, the information what the deadline is, because we have, huh?
We'll, we'll get the information.
And then tell my legislative aide and we'll, you know, she'll tell me. And if we can look at September fifth, which is the next city council meeting, which is a couple of weeks away.
Sure. Chair, and if I could just add one more thing, the improvement assessment is what does projects, capital projects for the most part. The service assessment may have projects in response to a flooding event or in response to minor projects, which is like under half a million dollars typically. But a majority of the service assessment work is providing service, and our staff doing it is cheaper than contracts, but we also have contracts that amount to millions of dollars. And also, the operating budget for stormwater is higher than what the assessment brings in. So, I'd just like to clarify that this isn't, our operating budget isn't fifteen point five million, it's almost twenty-one million dollars for stormwater operations.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we take any, any motions or action, there's more public comment. There was a gentleman that, that received notice and wanted to speak, but he only speaks Spanish. Mr. Shelby. Can we translate, or we're not allowed to do that?
Online or present?
He's right here.
Well, perhaps we can hold that, because if he can only speak Spanish, we do, we do, we only have, I don't think it'd be appropriate if I have a council member translate.
Oh, you're right. I wouldn't do that myself.
No. So, why don't we, if we can hold, if we're going to hold this to get back to the other, who's this gentleman who needs help?
He, he's in the blue t-shirt and a couple rows back. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Let me see what I can do with, working with the clerk's office or working with the community engagement to get somebody to assist us.
Okay, so no public, they'll, they'll talk to him directly since we're going to postpone this item?
We'll go, he'll have the opportunity during the time it's postponed to be able to get somebody here to help him speak. So, when it comes back, he'll be able to speak if we can.
You're talking about come back at another day?
No.
No.
Today.
Okay, all right, so we'll just...
Do we know that he wants to speak specifically to this item? Can I ask him that?
Yeah, Lisa brought me a piece of paper.
Oh, Lisa brought, okay, then that's why we made it.
He received the notice, so.
Let me see what we can do to accommodate him, please.
All right, so seventy-seven and seventy-eight, let's push them off real quick.
Councilmember Miranda, would you just let him know that I'm going to see if I can accommodate him?
Señor, usted está aquí para el número setenta y seis.
Seven.
Which one, seventy-seven?
Seventy-eight.
¿El número setenta y seis o setenta y siete?
It's seventy-seven and seventy-eight.
Can I turn the mic, I don't want this to be on the...
Yes.
I just want to ask. Ven aquí a hablar con consigno, ¿qué número usted está? Sí, ponte aquí a favor, dime tu nombre primero.
Lázaro Alejandro Reyes Arribal.
Lázaro, usted viene aquí para hablar, uno, ¿qué número en la...? ¿Quiere hablar en qué número?
No, it's seventy-seven and seventy-eight, it's all in one.
But it's in regards to this item.
Well, if, listen, if you could just, for the purposes of record, we're in the hearing, if you'd just explain what the notice is that you're talking about?
Yes.
What numbers?
It doesn't say.
It doesn't say.
It doesn't say, it just has the site address, and then it has the property ID number.
It's service, so it's seventy-seven.
It's service, right, seventy-seven.
And it's for the stormwater assessment?
Yes.
And could you inform him that I will, unless you are able to?
We'll let Charlie do it. His, his Spanish is better than mine, Councilmember Miranda.
What do you want to tell him?
If you could just ask him to, please, please remain here while we arrange to have somebody come in to help translate.
I can tell him.
Nosotros no podemos, no le podemos hablar en español, entonces van a encontrar a alguien así pueden ayudar con esta situación. Si usted quiere esperar, le vamos a encontrar a alguien.
Okay, está bien, gracias.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to hold off.
Chair, if I could clarify, I have the information, September fifth will work.
Okay.
The deadline is September fifteenth, for tax.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, it's a general housekeeping item before you, continue. We received one written comment for item number seventy-seven and one written comment for item number seventy-eight. Would council please receive and file those?
So, so move from, motion from Councilwoman Viera, do you have a second?
Second.
Chairman, Councilmember Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Carlson.
Yeah, if I could, so I would move to, to, can I just make a comment then about, I just want to make a comment, we don't have time to do a forensic investigation between now and September fifth. I would just ask, I can make a motion and just ask that the, this, this goes above Vic's head, it's not, this is, this, this issue we're talking about, Vic is partly involved, but it, but there are other people involved in the city. I would just ask that the folks involved in the city would meet with maybe the city attorney, city council attorney and, and our, and our budget advisor to go through and, and show them what all these labels mean. And if, 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 if our, if our advisor comes back, and also include Ms. Pointer. But if they come back and say, okay, it was a misunderstanding, then fine, and we'll move forward. But otherwise, may, there may be a situation where we need to miss, change labels or whatever. Thank you.
So, would you like to make that a motion and also continue seventy-seven and seventy-eight until September fifth? And I'm going to go to Mr. Shelby.
I, I, I suggest that that not, that motion not be made during this public hearing, number one.
Okay.
The motion about, that's outside the scope of this public hearing, and to hold this item for just a few minutes to see if this gentleman doesn't have to come back so he can actually speak to it, if that's what he wishes to today.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted, McLean Evans, Assistant City Attorney, just to remind council to please leave the hearings open. As Mr. B. Day said, we can make this, the September fifteenth deadline with the tax collector if you choose to continue the item. One other point to consider on number seventy-eight, which is the capital improvements assessment. We do have issued bonds that are dependent upon the approval of that. So, just one point to consider on that item.
Okay. So, Mr. Shelby, what is your recommendation?
If you could hold seventy-seven and seventy-eight, and as all, I try to make contact with somebody who can translate.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Señor, vamos a, no vamos a votar ahora, vamos a esperar, así buscan alguien que hable español para ayudarlo. Okay, si usted espera. All right, we're going to go to seventy-nine.
Good morning, Justin Vaske, Legal Department. I am here regarding item number seventy-nine, and we are requesting the approval of a resolution to adopt a non-advalorm assessment role for the non-advalorm assessment within the downtown Ybor areas of the City of Tampa for the purpose of paying a portion of the operating costs of the Tampa Historic Electric Street Car Project during fiscal year 2025. And as a reminder, approval of the resolution that adopts the non-advalorm assessment role must occur during the hearing. And the purpose of this hearing is to hear testimony and receive evidence to consider the adoption of the non-advalorm assessment role within the special assessment district, to pay a portion of the operating costs of the Tampa Ybor Historic Electric Street Car Project. The City of Tampa, after providing notice by first-class US mail to the affected property owners within the special assessment district and by publication in a newspaper generally circulated in Hillsborough County in accordance with Florida statutes, we have done this. Mr. Michael English is here to speak to this item. I have received one objection regarding this assessment, and I'd like to present it to the clerk to receive and file.
We have a motion received from Councilmember Hurtak, Senator Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Mr. English will now present. Mr. English, come on up, please state your name.
Good morning, my name is Michael English. I'm, I've been before you before and I'm pleased to be here again this morning, Mr. Chairman and council members. The streetcars, the streetcar had another important year. We carried over one point three million people. We're making a lot of tourists happy, we're making a lot of residents happy. It's become, the streetcar has really become an important icon in the character and flavor of the City of Tampa, and I'm, I'm very proud to have been associated with it for so many years. I'm here this morning to ask you to continue to support the special assessment as you have in previous years. I want to also thank the Hart, Hart staff has done an amazing job operating the streetcar. They work very hard at it, they don't make many mistakes. I also want to thank Vic B. Day and the Mobility Department and your risk manager and a number of people in the, in the city administration have been endlessly helpful with us whenever Hart needs help or the Streetcar Board needs help. So, on behalf of the Streetcar Board, I'm asking for your support. And I have Hart senior staff here with me this morning to answer any technical questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, Councilmember Carlson?
I would just like to, staff, sorry to make you get back up again. The, the feedback I saw from the public is concerned that people think this is new. Could you just address that, please?
Justin Vaske, Legal Department, this is not a new assessment and the rate has not changed.
It's not an increase, it's not new.
It's not increased, the district has not been expanded either. Thank you.
Thank you very much, because I've, I've too heard concerns, so thank you for the clarification. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number seventy-nine? At Hart, Mr. Willetts is here, I believe, and others. Do you have anything to add? Nope, all right. We cannot close the public hearing. We cannot close the public hearing until we pass this resolution. May I have a motion to move the resolution? Motion from Councilmember Hertak, Senator Councilmember Viera, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Now, do we need a motion to close the public hearing, or do we just leave it?
Why don't we close, and when we get the next one, we'll open it and close.
Okay, motion to close this public hearing?
I'll move.
Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember, second from, second from Councilmember Hertak, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, sir, Mr. English.
Thank you very much, as always.
All right, now we have item number 80.
Justin Vaskey, Legal Department, I'm here for item number 80. We are requesting the approval of a resolution to adopt the non-advalorm assessment role for a non-advalorm assessment within the downtown special service district of the city of Tampa for the purpose of paying for the provision of certain enhanced services in said area during the 2025 fiscal year, including but not limited to marketing, business development, safety, maintenance, transportation, and planning, beautification, and urban design. Once again, it's a reminder that approval of the resolution that adopts the non-advalorm assessment must occur during the hearing. We are also seeking the approval of the downtown special services agreement between the city and the downtown partnership regarding the use of the non-advalorm assessment within the downtown special services district. The CEO and president of the downtown partnership is here to answer any questions, and I have received two objections to this assessment, which I'd like to present to the clerk for the receiving.
Motion received and filed, Councilmember Miranda, second from, second from, second from Councilmember Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, Councilmember Carlson?
I just want to ask the same question. I ask this question every year just for, because some people have just moved into certain areas, but again, the same question, so it's not new and it's not an increase, right?
Justin Vaskey, Legal Department, it is not new and there's no increase.
And how long has this been going, 30 years or something like that?
I think in the range of 20 years.
20 years, okay.
25.
Yeah, just everybody, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am, come on up, and please state your name.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Heather Vanderford, and I'm a recent resident in the downtown area, 33602 zip code, and I'm just confused as to why this is a tax on our zip code and not a city tax? When most of the area that we live in, everyone in the city of Tampa is using the amenities, using the Riverwalk area, using Armature Works, and it just doesn't seem fair.
Councilmember Carlson?
Should we get, should we get staff to explain how these are set up and?
Yeah, we have Mr. Drinker here and then the new director.
But from a legal point of view, to set up one of these, you have, initially, you can explain, but you have to get input from the community and.
Yeah, Justin Vaskey, Legal Department, this special services assessment area is a limited assessment area. It's for services, they provide services within that area. So it's not a citywide special assessment, it's only focused on the assessment area, and it provides a benefit to that particular area.
But in the, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the beginning, when they set it up, they get input from property owners, and property owners can opt in or opt out, is that, no?
Mr. Vaskey?
Explain how this is set up. It's a special assessment district, you can't opt in or opt out. There is a public hearing to establish the district, there has to be a study and an analysis proving that that area has benefited by the assessment and that those monies are used in that area solely for that, those purposes that are set forth. And there's a methodology that has to be approved and has to meet certain legal tests. And so there's a public hearing before this body to establish that assessment. It comes before you all annually to.
But when it was, when it was set up, I only know from the experience of trying to do the one, working with folks in Ybor, in the beginning, when it was set up, if a property owner was on the border and they said, I don't want to be included, I don't want the services, could they have opted out at that time?
You can't, there are processes by which, if you, if this council believed that a specific area did not meet that test and wanted to be excluded, we could go, and we've done that before with the downtown assessment, for instance.
But that was, those decisions were made 20 years ago.
Those decisions were made many, many years ago, but yes, we've excluded areas based on evidence at that time, but.
Thank you very much. Would anybody like to move the resolution, the first one?
Some.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Henderson, who has a second, second from Councilmember Miranda, this is the first part of the resolution of 80, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then the second resolution?
I'll move.
Motion.
Do we want to hear from the downtown partnership?
Does the downtown partnership have anything to present? Yes, ma'am?
The new president.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice to.
Sure.
Welcome to Tampa.
Good morning and thank you. I just want to introduce myself to the, to this honorable body, Keneta Bridges, and the new president and CEO of the Tampa Downtown Partnership. And I just want to commend this body and thank this body for the work that they do to advance Tampa as a whole, as well as the city of downtown. And I just want to let you guys know that as a partnership, we look forward to continuing to work with you to advance the growth of downtown, to ensure that downtown is a premier destination for residents, businesses, and visitors. And so I just thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome. All right, can I get a motion to move that second resolution?
I'll move.
Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Henderson, all in favor? So the gentleman that was here about this.
Was that a motion, do we need a motion to close after that?
Can I get a motion to close? Motion to close item 80, motion from Councilmember Viera, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Going back real quick to the stormwater items, I know the gentleman that was here, we were able to help him. Mr. Vaskey, did you want to add something to 77 and 78?
Yeah, I, one concern that I have, there was a legal decision that came out with relative to your opening and continuing zoning hearings where a district court said that that, because the statute did not directly address that, you couldn't do that, and the legislature had to go and fix that. That doesn't apply necessarily to special assessments. And these special assessments, let me explain to you, the stormwater service assessment basically apply, basically pays for the stormwater operations staff for the city. I know there may be questions about that, but if that assessment does not get passed, we basically don't have a stormwater operations department any longer. And then the stormwater capital improvement assessment basically pays for capital stormwater improvements that we have borrowed money and issued bonds on. So those are important things just for this council to be aware of, so I just.
So, Mr. Vaskey, if we were to continue this or postpone this for two weeks, are we in violation then?
That's the question I've asked McLean Evans to look at, frankly, because I'm concerned that there's, that case that came out in the zoning context, whether someone could try to make that same argument in the special assessment.
So we can hold off any motions until later in the meeting, you know, as we explore that?
If you want to hold off on that, I don't think there's, I've had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Vaskey, I do think there is validity in what he's saying. Mr. Vaskey, it's two different statutes, the legislature.
There's two different statutes, and the legislature had to fix 166.
And this one is not under 166.
Yes, sir.
But the reasoning of a court could still apply if somebody wants to challenge this.
Correct.
Understand.
And that's my concern.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, just, just so, so you know, the public knows, the, my objection is not that we shouldn't have this because we need to have stormwater remediation. My question is that I want to make sure that money's being spent efficiently.
I understand.
And that it's being spent on stormwater and not something else, because we need, so if we vote today, I'm going to vote no, for the, not because I'm against moving these projects forward, I'm going to vote no because I'm not confident that the money's being spent effectively to remediate the stormwater problem.
So would you be making a motion to continue this, or are you going to leave it alone?
I'm just voicing my concern about continuing.
Yeah, no, I understand.
If that's what the council would like to do, that's fine, but there's a risk associated with that, and I just want you to.
I second, I join in that concern as well.
Can we hold this until after lunch so we can have time to think about it? I'm just trying to be as flexible as possible and accommodate as possible.
I mean, we've already continued it, I guess, so that, we can, I guess, waiting till after lunch is not a problem, I'm not sure we'll have a different answer after lunch, to be quite honest with you, but we can, we can wait till after lunch.
The issue would be, if it is delayed, the only issue would not be whether or not we'd be on sound legal ground after lunch, I don't think that'll change. What would change is whether the staff could be able to work with Councilmember Carlson, and what other council members may have concerns that could be addressed that might perhaps put their minds at ease to move forward on this today. Otherwise, it would be a no vote.
Yeah, Councilmember Viera?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I mean, we, I suggest we wait until after lunch to see if the staff can take a look at any concerns, and then we move forward with it. If there's, there's a reasonable basis to state that if we continue it, then we undermine the legal sufficiency of this, I'm not comfortable making that risk, and, or having that risk. So I, I mean, I think the reasonable thing to do is to wait after lunch to let Mr. Bday and others take a look at the issues that are brought concern, see if they can't be resolved, and if they can't, then we take a vote on it and go from there.
I think that's a very Italian way to do it, eat, think about it, you know, and we'll revisit it after lunch. I don't think there's any harm in a few hours, if, you know, we'll figure it out. So 77 and 78, we'll wait till after lunch.
And my recommendation would be to any council member who has questions to specifically address them if they wish to between now and then.
I don't think, I don't think that we're going to get the answers between now and then, and I think that in the future, as these things come up, there should be some other kind of release valve where we have a discussion about the numbers to make sure they're being used effectively in all of these, because the public is getting more and more sophisticated about the way they're looking at these things, they're asking us questions, they're objecting more and more to taxes. And, you know, every day I hear, especially on days like today, I hear that, you know, why is there flooding in my streets? And that people feel like the projects are going really slowly, and then we look at the numbers, and it looks like most of the money is being spent on people instead of projects. So we need to have more communication, and the administration needs to have more of a dialogue with the public on this to build trust about how the money is being spent and make sure it is being spent correctly. We see projects that go from, you know, a park that's $5 million that goes to $18 million to $41 million. We have a police evidence room that's gone from, I don't know, $5 million to $40 million. There's just, there's no limit to how money is spent on things. And on this project and pipes, I hear from vendors and others all the time that there's wasteful spending, and the millions and millions of dollars. And the people at home are suffering, they have flooding in the streets, and they can't afford to pay for food. You know, most of the restaurants I talk to are down 30% right now. Restaurants are going out of business, a beloved restaurant, Ella's is closing, because people aren't spending money going out anymore because they can't afford to eat out anymore. If they can't afford to eat out and they're cutting costs in every way, we need to show them that we're using every dollar of their money effectively. Thank you.
Councilmember Hertak?
Thank you. Maybe going forward in the future, we can not just have a public hearing, but during the public hearing, maybe have a presentation about. I think that would, that would help going forward. But if we are going to go ahead and vote on this, then I think we need to take public
Yeah, no.
You could take public comment now, it's a public comment.
But that's what I'm saying, I mean, if people are here to speak on it, I'd rather them do it now.
We were doing that.
For the purposes of the hearing, Mr. Chairman, would you kindly ask if there's anybody who is willing to speak on items, what is it, 77 and 78?
Yes, I was doing that, okay. Yes, ma'am, would you like to speak on 77 and 78? Please come up to the podium so we can get you on the microphone, and please state your name.
Hi, I think I'm in the right place. I'm a new homeowner.
Your name, please.
Janelle LaRusquet. I got a letter, two different letters, that stated my parcel and the assessment costs, and I'm very new, I'm a first homeowner, first time homeowner, through Habitat. So I don't know if you guys are aware of Habitat, I'm sure. You know, it is to help, you know, for a home to be affordable, all the cost, and I just bought it. So I got that letter, and you know, I'm a single mom, you know, like I go to school, I'm trying to, you know, like, I work for USF, you know, on my plan, I'm like, I see that cost, and I'm like, okay, well, you know, being a first time, I don't know what really this is about, I did read the letter, but I kind of get the gist of it, so it's like, okay, you know, I'm gonna be by. But I am with Mr. Bill, you know, considering and getting down to specifics that things and budgets are being used specifically and thoroughly, not just as a general view, because it can affect, it can affect people. And I live in a non-flood zone, so in my case, but it's like, I just wanted to state that that's very important. And a little bit, it adds up, then there's, you know, property taxes, and it just becomes like a trickle effect economically. So that's all I wanted to say, and that I am very much for what Mr. Bill stated.
Thank you very much.
Stephanie Pointer. I feel like I threw a monkey wrench in something today, but you know what? When I got up here and spoke about what I spoke about this morning, guess what? I said it on Monday, too. I said it four days ago, three days ago, whatever. And everybody has my phone number, and everybody could have picked up the phone and called me and said, oh, if you're wrong, let's, let's talk about why you're wrong. People want to tell me that I'm wrong, especially budget and finance folks, they will tell me, oh, you're wrong about that. But when I email them and I make phone calls to them, they never want to explain anything to me. I don't want to be wrong. But when you don't, when you ignore me, I don't go away, I just get louder. And I actually didn't even realize this was on the agenda today because for the first time in probably two years, I haven't read the entire agenda. So I had no clue that it was on the agenda today. But here I am with the same paperwork that we had on Monday, talking about the same thing for a second time, when everybody on staff knows full good and well that I was here complaining about it on Monday. So now it's rush, 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 when they could have spoke to me and I wouldn't have brought it up again, because I, I would have understood by today. But now here we are, having to put things off, having to make legal decisions because nobody wanted to say, hey, this is where you're mixed up or you're confused. I'm just a citizen, but it doesn't make sense and the numbers don't add up. And just like Councilman Carlson said, it's not just Vic's department that has to have answers to this, because the money truly lies in budget and finance. And so if you don't talk to me, I'm going to keep, I'm going to keep asking the questions that I ask. And I, you know, I apologize that the legal departments happened to take up for the ramifications of this today, but you know what? There's been two days that people could have picked up the phone and called me and said, hey, Pointer, this is what's going on, this is what you've got wrong, this is what you've got right, this is where we are in the middle. I was at stormwater yesterday, just saying, for an hour, talking about stormwater, nothing but stormwater. But stormwater is important to me because we are overdeveloped and under, under stormwater attended, and, you know, we have problems. And I'm sorry that I'm making life hard for the attorneys, but if somebody had called me, we wouldn't be here having this conversation.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak for these items? We're going to hold them till after lunch, is that fine? Okay, we'll hold them till after lunch to make any decisions. Item number 81.
Justin Vaskey.
If you could just put on your record, on the record, I guess I'm minting your motion when you continued those public hearings to the fifth, to amend it.
No, we never voted on it.
We never voted that, so it's still open? Okay, good, thank you.
No, no, no. No second, no, no.
No motion to that effect in the record.
Justin Vaskey, Legal Department, I'm here for item number 81. We are requesting the approval of a resolution to adopt the non-advalorm assessment role for non-advalorm assessment within the West Shore Business District of the city of Tampa for the purpose of paying for the provision of certain enhanced services and improvements in a said area during the fiscal year 2025, including transportation improvements, marketing, including transportation improvements, marketing and security services for said area. Uh, the unit of meas- measurement or the assessment amount has not changed. Also, we are seeking approval of the West Shore Special Services Agreement between the city and the West Shore Alliance regarding the use of the non-avalorum assessment within the area of the city known as the West Shore Special Services District for the provision of certain improvements and services within said area for the twenty-twenty-five fiscal year. Uh, there are no written objections to, uh, concerning the special assessment. And as a reminder, approval of the resolution that adopts the non-avalorum assessment rule must occur during the hearing. And, uh, Michael Marino, Executive Director of the West Shore Alliance is here to answer any questions on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, Mr. Marino, come on up. Please state your name.
Uh, good afternoon. Michael Marino, Executive Director, West Shore Alliance. Thank you all for having me. Thank you, counsel. Um, as mentioned, we're not changing the rate. But as we talked about, uh, in our briefings with you all, this is just an assessment on commercial properties in West Shore. And the last year, those commercial properties valuation went down in total about seventy million dollars. So one of the needs for us going forward is a change to mixed-use zoning that would encourage more of that mixed-use to occur in West Shore. It's something you'll all see, uh, coming up, uh, hopefully later on this year. We're working with city staff on this. We're working with, uh, the planning commission staff on this as well. Our goal is to make West Shore a premier mixed-use district. Uh, you'll actually approve something earlier today that allows the West Shore Alliance actually to take over the maintenance of the medians on Kennedy Boulevard. Uh, there'll be something up, uh, else coming later on this year, hopefully for West Shore Boulevard as well. So that's the work that we're doing. But again, having a mixed-use zoning be improved for West Shore to make sure those values increase and come back is critically important, especially because of the fact that with the West Shore interchange, there's been about half million square feet of commercial office that's been lost as a part of building that project. So it's really important that whatever development occurs going forward is a mixed-use because that's what the market demands. And if any questions, I have to take them. Thank you.
Councilmember Carlson.
And do, do you remember how long this has been in place?
Uh, since September twenty-two, uh, two thousand and two. So twenty-two years.
Okay. Um, and then, um, the seventy million dollar reduction in value, how much does that hit your budget?
So it, it ends up being, uh, like in total about ten thousand dollars difference because of, of the way the assessment is done. It's really a drag on city. Our, the rate for West Shore is thirteen, uh, thirteen-two-five cents per thousand. But it obviously has a much larger impact on obviously the city and county's budget because that's where the lion's share of that property tax revenue is going.
By the way, I'm hearing, to my colleagues, I'm hearing, maybe you've heard the same thing from big, uh, property owners. You know, the last few years, we've had an increase in budget and, and the budgets have exceeded expectations. But that, what the big property owners are telling me now is they're gonna go back to the, uh, property appraiser and negotiate down because there are so many comps of buildings where the property values have gone down. And so, um, and this is, this is through in all, in our urban areas. And so this could have a big impact on CRA money, for example, but also the special services districts. This next year could be a much bigger hit potentially.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? No. If not, is there a public comment on item number eighty-one? There's nobody registered. May I have a motion to move the resolution? Motion, Councilmember Miranda, for the first resolution. Second, Councilmember Henderson, all in favor. Aye, any opposed?
Move the second resolution.
Motion to move the second resolution, Councilmember Miranda, Senator, Councilmember Henderson, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Motion from Councilmember Miranda, Senator, Councilmember Henderson, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you very much. Item number eighty-two. We are at eleven-twenty-nine. I don't know how long this is gonna take, but we do want to stop at twelve because we do have one-thirty public hearing, so we'll, we'll figure out.
Ross Hammons of Elton Burnation, presenting file number VAC twenty-four dash thirteen. I'd like to ask the clerk to share the, thank you. The applicant is Waste Management Incorporated. Representing his name is Gardenborough Hudson. Property address is fourteen hundred North Thirty-Fifth Street. This is a proposed vacating request to vacate a portion of Fourth Avenue located north of Third Avenue, south of CSX Railroad, east of Thirty-Fourth Street and west of Thirty-Fifth Street. Application was filed, the City of Tampa, um, April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four. The applicant's reason for the application is owner of the property on, on both sides of the right-of-way requests to be vacated. They are planning construction of a new industrial building that will be built across the right-of-way. Thank you. This right-of-way was created by subdivision plat and city acquisition. Existing right-of-way is approximately nineteen thousand five hundred square feet. This existing right-of-way is a protected brick street. And proper notice was filed for this and it's to be, it's required that the protected brick street is to go through one public hearing and that public hearing will run in conjunction with this vacating. And proper notice was filed, uh, per section twenty-two thirty-nine of the code. Here is an aerial view of the proposed vacating request, yellow, and the property owner, uh, the property in red. And you can see the proposed vacating here in the, in the subdivision plat of East Bay Park. As you can see, it was a previous railroad spur. Here's an image of the, uh, proposed vacating request. The right-of-way is looking east from North Thirty-Fourth Street. Here is the proposed vacating right-of-way looking west from North Thirty-Fifth Street. Staff has no objections to this vacating request. Easement reservations are required by stormwater and TCO. Temporary easement is required by the water department. Special conditions include natural resources that must comply with chapter twenty-seven regards to tree preservation and site design for any improvements placed adjacent to trees in a vacated area. Number two, the vitrified brick must be cleaned, palletized and returned to the City of Tampa's Mobility Department. Number three, is within twelve months, the applicant must submit a utility service application to the water department for full abandonment and disconnection of water facilities. They must execute a release of temporary easement, which will include a bill of sale provision, transferring the ownership of city-owned water, uh, service utility, uh, facilities located within the vacated right-of-way. Uh, number four, the petitioner must be issued a permit from the city of, from the city for vertical construction of a structure encompassing the vacated right-of-way within five years. I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Uh, this is closing a complete street. Am I correct?
Yes, it's a complete street.
My problem with that, I have no problem with the project, but I just don't vote to close the street. I haven't done it in the past years when one was in our neighborhood and I gotta stick with that. I'm not opposed to it, but I just can't vote because you close one street, you're gonna have to close them all. If they have, and I'm not talking about this petition, I'm talking in general.
Councilmember Carlson.
Could you just put that last slide up again? Sorry, I need to just change it. And, and just to reiterate one more time, number two, we have an ordinance that requires people to, the city or others to protect the bricks and that, that's what's applying here.
Yeah, it has to be notified along with the vacating notice.
So the bricks.
That is a brick street that is being proposed to be vacated.
Folks get very concerned about bricks being pulled up.
Sure.
What will happen is they, they won't be able to save all of them, but they will save as many as possible. As you say, palletize and use them somewhere else in the city, maybe Seventh Avenue or something.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. All right. Uh, petition for eighty-two.
Morning, counsel. Tyler Hudson, four hundred North Ashley Drive. Um, I'm mindful of our position between, uh, this body and lunch, so we're gonna try to keep it as brief as possible. Uh, with me here this morning is my colleague Alex Schaler. I mean, Chomkar with Stantec is here, along with Mike DeClerc with Waste Management. He's gonna speak towards the end of the presentation. A picture is worth a thousand words, uh, especially given the time constraints of this presentation. This is probably a familiar sight to a lot of you. It might be in your neighborhood. Um, it's, it's like me, sometimes it's a familiar sight at the end of my own, my own driveway. This is, could be a metaphor for the growth that Tampa's had. It could be a metaphor for the consumption that, the consumption habits we have as Americans. Um, this application wasn't, uh, filed in service of, of fixing our growth problem or, or fixing our consumption problem. But it was, was filed in service of trying to, to react to that responsibly because a lot of people, uh, do recycle in the City of Tampa in this region. And we have an acute, uh, lack of facilities able to accommodate that. I'm gonna try to go through some of these elements that Ross already hit on quickly. But the area in yellow, um, which you're looking at is north of Adamo Drive, east of the crosstown connector. This is what, you know, between nineteen-ten and nineteen-fifteen was the, the city of Gary. Waste Management owns what's outlined in yellow. Uh, the Fourth Avenue piece, um, is, is, is crosshatched. So on the right, you'll see a fairly large building. Every single green box for recycling in the City of Tampa goes there. Um, and whatever happens today, I highly commend the tour that they give to anyone because it's a tour that's really stuck with me when you see how it's all laid out. Um, and the amount that it's able to accommodate given its size. What Waste Management wants to do is to, to build a structure that would cross over Fourth Avenue on the other side to process, uh, waste for Hillsborough, recycling for Hillsborough County, uh, other regional governments. It would be available potentially, uh, should the city ever need additional capacity as well. Let, want to talk a little bit about why I think this is a very unique, you know, quote, street and some limiting principles that I think would make it very hard to argue that from supporting this, you have to close, uh, all streets in the future. This was not part of the original Fourth Avenue. This is a thirty-foot rail spur that has since been abandoned. Sixty years later, the city added a little twenty-foot strip to turn it into a street. So it is part of Fourth Avenue, but this particular block between Thirty-Fourth and Thirty-Fifth Street, and you've, y'all have seen plenty of plats of Ebor City where it's your standard, you know, T-fifty by one-fifty block. This has always been a very unusually large landmass, always. This, this plat, I believe, might even be before the nineteen hundreds. So this was never an original portion of Fourth Avenue. Fourth Avenue stopped here originally and it was a rail spur. Now again, city did add some land to it to turn it into a road, but it is, uh, not really, it, it's not in any meaningful use at all now and it impedes the construction of a really important regional facility. Zoning, um, it might be unusual for me to be here on an alley or a road vacating in the daytime. That's because there's no PD zoning. Uh, to imagine that, uh, this is an industrial use in a absolute sea of industrial heavy zoning in the City of Tampa. Uh, there is, there is no rezoning required. Um, the, the land uses in this entire area is, it's really all industrial. The current use of the site is sort of a, kind of a dumpster graveyard if you've ever driven by. There's just more recycling bins and dumpsters than you've ever seen on the land currently. That, that's the land we're talking about, the land on which Waste Management intends to build a facility that, uh, Mike will talk about shortly. Again, Mike will talk about this a little bit more. I want to make a comment about this. Th- this isn't Plan A or Plan B. I, the, in Stantac and, and again, Mike can talk more about this. But of course, the goal was to build a facility within the existing footprint of the land area. If you go to the site that's currently there, you'll notice this is like a, this is like an assembly line. There is, there is a, a linearness to this process where material gets dumped, it goes up. It can't go up too steep a slope. It's gotta go up at a gentle slope. There's sorting and it goes back down. So there's, there, there's an inherent length to this process. And to take best advantage of the efficiencies and machinery that exists today to be able to pass those savings on to the end governments, then down to the end users, um, this is the facility that best captures those efficiencies. It does require crossing over Fourth Avenue and, and onto the parcel that they own below. I think Ross talked about this. It's a reasonable question to always ask. Well, what happens if this doesn't happen? What if this great recycling facility doesn't happen? We talked about the reverter in five years, but more importantly, I mean, within a year, these guys have to move very, very quickly to accommodate some water relocations. That's the quickest deadline that, that I've seen, uh, on, on these special conditions. Typically, you have a couple of years. You know, I've seen as short as eighteen months. A year is exceptionally fast. They are okay with that because this project has a great deal of urgency behind it. Um, as soon as we are able, hopefully, to get your approval on this, um, they're, they're gonna be kicking off work right away. Um, Mike walked the neighborhood. Every adjacent property owner supports this. They have no issue with this. They don't use this portion of Fourth Avenue at all. And I think the next slide evidences that. This is the most pristine brick street that I've probably seen. Um, and the fact that this is in such an industrial area where the predominant mode of transportation is a very heavy truck laden with materials and the bricks look like this speaks to how little it's used. Um, we, we certainly are aware the bricks aren't ours. They'll, Waste Management's gonna have to pick them up, palletize them. Uh, I know there's a comment about, you know, sometimes the bricks can't be used. I, I am not a brick, uh, extraction expert, but these are, these bricks are in excellent shape. Um, and I think knowing what the city's needs are for bricks around the city, um, I think that's a, a, a very much a secondary benefit. That's certainly not the reason we're filing this is to free the bricks, but I, I do think given what's going on in Seventh Avenue, that is like an additional benefit that the city should consider. So with that, I'm gonna ask Mike to talk a little bit more about Waste Management and their goals for the site.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm Mike DeClerc. I'm the Recycling Operations Director for WM for the State of Florida. I am a Hillsborough County resident. And so with that, I will, uh, show this first slide. There's a lot of, a small print there. What I'm really gonna highlight, I'm certainly not gonna read the whole slide, is, uh, as a company, we're investing over a billion dollars over a four-year span into recycling infrastructure around the country. Um, with over two hundred million of that happening in Florida alone. Um, we're moving to things like optical sorters, robotics, intelligent sorting, AI. As with every industry, there's been tremendous advantage, uh, advances within the last five years on technology. And we want to, uh, take advantage of that to move our facilities into the twenty-first century and, and build something that would be good for not only today, but for five, ten, twenty years from now. So this next slide kind of speaks more to the, uh, investment in Florida. We're just this week completing a project, a modernization project in Cocoa at a mid-size recycling center that we have there. It's an eighteen million dollar project to modernize that plant. Um, we just, this month, broke ground on a brand-new facility down in Broward County in Pembroke Pines. That's gonna be roughly an eighty million dollar project, um, on property we own down there. That'll open either December twenty-twenty-five or January twenty-twenty-six in, in that range. And this project would be finished probably in mid-twenty-twenty-seven. And the investment in the City of Tampa on our property in Eastern Ebor would be around eighty million dollars as well. When you look at, th- this shot has been on a couple of different slides, but, um, one of the questions that gets asked is what are you gonna do with your current facility if you build a new one right next door? Well, there's a number of things that we can do and we would engage the solid waste department of the City of Tampa to come up with the best use of that. Um, some ideas that are out there are recycling center for construction demolition materials where metals and aggregate could be extracted when we tear down buildings. Um, that often goes to the landfill in today's world and, uh, that would, that is one idea. The city may also have a use for a transfer station. Um, right now, the current use of our property where we want to build is container repair and storage. Um, and we could move that operation in that building as well. So that's kind of an open-ended thing, but this facility is gonna allow us to basically produce twice as fast as we are today with our now becoming antiquated equipment. We opened the recycling Tampa Bay site almost thirteen years ago and now the, the equipment is becoming outdated and we want to modernize it. This next slide shows the, the, the very rapid growth in what the City of Tampa's solid waste department all by themselves has sent us. And each one of these data points is, uh, a six-month snapshot. So what you're looking at here is the last five years and those are tons, um, that were delivered to our facility by the City of Tampa. So you could see, uh, it has increased. In the most recent six-month period of January through June of this year, we actually eclipsed the ten thousand ton, uh, plateau for the first time. And, and that's a good thing because that means more people are recycling and, and the volume is going up. But across all of Florida, the recycling infrastructure has not take, has not kept up with the rapid population increase. So we're, we're, uh, trying to solve that problem by getting ahead of it. When you look at the, what's available today, we have our current facility in Eastern Ebor. There is a competitor facility over in St. Petersburg. But we're both pretty well capped out on our val- our volumes. So when you look at where Hillsborough County and the City of Tampa are gonna be three years from now, the projection is about ninety-one thousand tons. Um, and then you have other volume in the area, Pinellas County and Manatee County and Pasco County that when you total it all up, it's, it's close to two hundred thousand tons of, of available capacity that we just don't have today. So we're trying to, uh, build a facility that'll serve the Tampa Bay region and the City of Tampa for years to come. Um, this has been shown several slides. What I want to focus on here is that this short stretch of Fourth Avenue is very lightly traveled. I know it because I walk it in my lunch hour when I'm at the Tampa plant. And, uh, the only ones who really use it are trucks coming into our facility and they still have easy access via Third Avenue from this, at the south or from Seventh Avenue to the north of the railroad tracks. They can still get into our, our facility without any issue. And we want to keep the car traffic in our future facilities separate from the truck crap, traffic for safety reasons, which is why we have it on that southern parcel with an entrance off a, a very short stretch of Thirty-Fifth Street that still, um, still exists and, and the cars would enter there for tours or our employees, et cetera. I did go door-to-door to all the neighbors. It's a very industrial area, but, um, I made two swings through. I, I first, uh, visited in person and, and described what we wanted to do and, and explained to them that this, this process would be necessary. Um, I then followed up six weeks later with, with asking them, are you willing to sign that you're in support of this project? And every one of them, uh, signed on to it. And there was one verbal, uh, from a property owner who's paraplegic. I offered to go to his house for him to sign. He declined that, but he did say verbally, uh, supported it and I had run it, uh, passed his, uh, his attorney, his real estate attorney. So we do have neighbor support for it. These next couple of slides are a couple of architectural renderings of what we want to build. It's gonna be an attractive building. It'll, it'll meet all the city's expectations in terms of aesthetics. Um, and, uh, I think it's something that the, the city would be very proud of for many years to come. And the final slide that I have is- And the final slide that I have is, you know, it's very important in order to educate the public, including school groups, civic groups, elected officials, staff, on what we do with these plants. We're very transparent about the process. We're more than happy to host tours upon request. It'll be very interactive versus the current building, which has a small educational room. This one will be very interactive. We'll have a traveling road show that digitally shows our plant to schools, as well as having school groups come in with an elevated platform that people can actually go out into the plant in a safe area and observe the whole process at work. So that's what we want to do and the reason we need for the vacation. The final slide is just some recognition that we've received as a company, as a company with ethics, high ethic standards, high diversity standards, and that, you know, we we've been doing business with the City of Tampa for a long time. We want to, you know, foster that relationship and carry it into the next phase.
Councilmember Hurtak.
Yes, I just, I mean, since we have this whole presentation, I'm going to go ahead and just ask. The public is is concerned with less items being able to be recycled. Can you talk about what this plant will do for that?
Yeah, I'm really glad you brought that up because in in the past, one of the most problematic things that we have is film, which is be like your your bread wrapper, that sort of film, and it's been long been the bane of recycling programs because it jams up the equipment. We've engineered a way around that, and this plant, we're actually piloting in partnership with Dow Chemical, film extraction and marketing that film as a separate item, which is really exciting, and this plant will have that from day one. We've also polypropylene is something like a butter dish. That is something that has been problematic in the past. We are recycling it in Tampa now, but it is a pretty manual process, and the quality sometimes is a bit questionable. But with these optical scanners that are available now, they can sort up to ten items a second and with great accuracy. So the the technology wasn't there when we when we built this facility thirteen years ago. So the the list of items is expanding. There's there's another thing that's called thermoforms. It's a very it's in the beginning stages of an item of a PET bottle, which is like your water bottle. It's not quite the same material, but that's something that we're going to have in this plant, too. The ability to expand our list is very important to us, and I know it is with the residents as well.
Thank you, and I'm just going to ask about, because I think some of those are a little technical terms. So by bread bag, you mean similar to like a plastic grocery bag?
Yeah.
Those that's the story we hear constantly, is the plastic grocery bag.
Yeah, and and that is an item where in the past, we would tell people, take it to a Publix or a drop-off site. It can be recycled, just not in your curbside program. We're trying to make it part of the curbside program. So right now, it gets in there anyway. So right now, our focus is extracting those and bailing, and we have a dedicated baler just for that item. So it basically vacuums it out of the system because it's very light. The wrapping that goes around a case of water, that kind of film, all of that would be part of our film processing.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I asked that because even though this is not a a hearing on that, since you brought it up, I thought this is a great time to ask.
Thank you very much. Anything else, sir? No? Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Mr. Hudson? Does that conclude your presentation?
I conclude the presentation. I'll talk a little bit about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody here for public comment? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Good morning, Stephanie Pointer. This is like a workshop day. I'm so excited. I support this. Let me tell you why. Because it doesn't cost the city a penny for them to expand it. It makes sense. We need to have more recycling, not less. It's going to take burden off the Waste to Energy Plant, and, you know, if we have to give up a street and they're saying they're going to give us the bricks, well, we need the bricks elsewhere, so we don't have to pay for them. So not only will this vacation like not cost us any money as citizens of Tampa, but we're actually not going to have to pay for additional bricks someplace else. Oh, my gosh, this is just crazy. I support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I just got to ask a question, and I know I'm not against saving the bricks. In fact, I was in the original council that saved the bricks. But what I'm asking is that these bricks are showing it was referenced made to the Ebor City bricks. I don't believe they are the same quality as the Ebor City bricks. Am I correct or not?
I don't know the answer to that.
The weight, the volume of the weight of the brick, because the ones in Ebor City all have a name on top of the brick. I saw no names on none of these bricks.
These don't have cartouches. I I don't believe these have the cartouches, the stamps on them, so I'm not sure if it's Ebor.
Yeah, I'm not asking. This has nothing to do with the hearing. I'm just hearing about the bricks and the variation of bricks.
Sure.
Since Ebor City was mentioned, I'm saying that I don't believe they are, but I'm not positive.
I can tell you from my lunchtime walks that a lot of them do have a stamp on them.
Some of them have stamps in.
Yeah, there's a mix of Augusta Block and all the others, but they're they're very pristine, so. Anybody else? Any rebuttal?
Tyler Hudson, for the record, just briefly, Counsel, I I know that you'll have obviously lives outside of being here, and you probably get asked, if you're at Home Depot, for example, you know, I I heard you voted on this or voted on that, and it's very important to me, to Alex, to my law firm, that we always arm you all with the most facts possible and and try to make decisions that are in favor of the applications we bring you as as easy as possible to support. And so I think in in conclusion, to the extent that someone asks, well, you're going to start closing roads left and right, there are this is probably the most unique right-of-way vacating I've ever brought before this council, and I just want to leave you with a couple points that really in either of them individually, but in the aggregate, I think make it very easy to vote yes in support of this. I think first, this was not originally a street, this was not originally Fourth Avenue at all. It was a thirty-foot rail spur that's been abandoned. No staff objection, no public opposition, all neighbor support. I think this is, you know, this is arguably more of a public facility than, you know, perhaps some something that is only selling something or an apartment building. And I think the unusually strong safeguards here is what's unusual. This is not a worry, you know, this right-of-way gets taken away, and then this turns into an apartment in two years. They've got to start working on this immediately, and it's very hard to move quickly in an environment like this. So the fact they have to get this stuff done in a year, the water relocation, I think is very important. And finally, I think, you know, when you have a Fortune two hundred company knocking on the door to make a really significant, almost nine-figure capital investment in your city, that's something we should really welcome, and this is necessary to to do that. So I thank you for your time and your patience. Thanks.
Can I get a motion closed?
I'll move.
Motion from Councilmember Viera, Senator, Councilmember Miranda, all in favor. I don't remember where I left off. Who wishes to read this? Councilmember Carlson.
Item move item number eighty-two, file number VAC twenty-four dash thirteen, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning a portion of Fourth Avenue right-of-way located north of Third Avenue, south of the CSX Railroad, east of Thirty-Fourth Street, and west of Thirty-Fifth Street within the plat of East Bay Park, second revision, a subdivision in the City of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, as more fully described in section two hereof, and approving a request to impact certain vitrified brick streets lying within said right-of-way, both subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions as more particularly set forth herein, providing for enforcement and penalties for violations, providing for definition, interpretation, and repealing conflicts, providing for severability providing effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, roll call, vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda? Carlson?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Clint Denny's absent. Henderson?
Yes.
Ameniscoco?
Yes.
Motion carried with Miranda voting no and Clint Denny being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at ten o'clock AM in Old City Hall, City Council Chambers, three one five East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three three six zero two.
All right, before we go to lunch, I'd like to announce that items three and thirty-eight is are going to be held for a time certain at four o'clock. Is that correct? Because we have a one-thirty public hearing. We also have seventy-seven and seventy-eight that we need to, we might as well just take those up at after the public hearing, at four o'clock after after these items. So having said that, we are in recess until one-thirty.